Good morning. Good morning. The February 13th, 2024 work session of the Anorondle County Council is called to order. Please ensure all electronic devices are in silent mode. This morning, it's my pleasure to welcome Mr. Matt Fleming. He's here to give the council an update on our, the resilience authority of Annapolis and Anorondle County. So, good morning, Mr. Fleming. You have the floor.
Climate Assessment came out. If you're not familiar with the National Climate Assessment, this is a congressionally mandated report that's done, it's supposed to be done every four years, involves leaders in the different federal agencies, academic agencies, and other public and private institutions. And they look at how we're doing as a, as a nation in terms of responding to climate change. One of the overwhelming takeaways from the report is that while adaptation activities are occurring across the U.S. and have increased since 2018, they're still, still too small and taking too long to keep pace with the rate of change we're experiencing. And unfortunately, I think, you know, with the storms that we've seen here in the county and the, the tides we saw, but in mid-January, we're seeing that firsthand. Another piece that came out of this report, a couple of key takeaways was, we know the techniques. These actions will provide wider benefits, whether they're health, habitat, economic and community, and accelerating these actions now will help to lessen some of the impacts that are predicted. All right. Senate Bill 457, again, I won't go too much into history because I want to talk about where we've been over the past year. This was just passed in the 2020 legislative session and established all local governments in Maryland, created the ability to create resilience authorities. The resilience authorities were created for local governments trying to find a flexible way, an efficient way to fund this type of infrastructure, but put the power in the local leaders' hands on how to develop their own authorities. So here, this is us, so we were established in 2021. Legislation passed by both the city and the county. We're the first multi-jurisdiction resilience authority in the United States. We bring together experts in finance, infrastructure, climate adaptation to a single group. We can look beyond municipal boundaries and annual budget constraints to design, fund, and efficiently deliver projects on behalf of the city and the county. How we work, we're governed by a board of directors. We're an independent body, so we have our own procurement policies. We have the ability to draw in a whole range of funding options. For infrastructure projects, we can charge and collect non-tax-related fees, issue or sell state and local taxes at bonds, as well as utilize, utilize state funding, nonprofit funding, provide capital for projects. And of course, we combine any source of these fundings, funding to get a project done. All right. So, last year, I think I was maybe two weeks into the job, I was here with Mr. Barron, had a chance to kind of give you guys an update on who we were and, and what we're going to try to do over the path, over the upcoming year. So what I promised you was, we're going to try to accelerate the progress, process of implementation, assure that we're at the front of the line for a lot of the federal and state funding that's available for the type of work that we can do. I'd like to begin the project, the process of constructing projects within our first year, so we can show that we're getting stuff done, and also look at, because climate impacts, the threats of climate are beyond our boundaries, try to foster projects with a regional lens that have a benefit within our county. So, we'll see how we did. Of course, I'm telling the story, so it's going to be a little positive or a little skewed. So, actions taken to date. So the institution's been established, we're up and running, we have our board, we have all the necessary governance structures in place, bylaws, et cetera. We, one of the first things we did out of the gate was we conducted a comprehensive planning review of both the city and the county. There's a lot to build on here, so trying to identify, use those plans to identify kind of that initial project portfolio. We undertook an effort to look at the BIL and IRA. So BIL is the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law, IRA is the Inflation Reduction Act. These are the two big federal legislations out there, kind of understand the types of funding programs that could help us implement the projects that we identified. There were over 400 distinct funding programs that were available to local governments. This past year, we've secured almost $23 million of outside funding for projects within the county and the city, and we're seeking right now additional $52 million for projects that are currently under review and application. Starting off, as I mentioned, kind of my initial plan was, in the first one to three years is, you know, let's look at a grant funding strategy. There's a lot of money out there, you know, let's try to take advantage of it. So we looked at going through all the different comprehensive plans, sea level rise strategies, nuisance flooding strategies, emergency management plans, to see which projects could be shovel-ready in the first one to three years. Those were really the driving forces behind a lot of the federal legislation. So that's where we focused. Over time, of course, this project portfolio is going to change, and we'll have to be a little more forward-looking, as opposed to just shovel-ready. But it was really like, how can we position ourselves for some of these immediate funding opportunities? The initial project portfolio and going through these plans and interviewing our different department heads, really focused on, you know, the community infrastructure. You know, these are, you know, our roads, protecting our roads, our parks, the natural infrastructure, where can we proactively target lands for conservation and restoration that would help mitigate risk, so kind of the harness nature, reduce risk, structural resilience, so looking at our, where we work, where we live, looking at the buildings, energy efficiency opportunities. And then the last one is really focusing on helping the city and the county transition to renewable energy sources. So that's our initial project portfolio. And so here's some of the projects to highlight, and again, I'm happy to go into much detail of any one of these, but I wanted to just kind of give you an overview of the projects that make up that $23 million. Jabez Branch, Councilwoman Fidler, there you go. I think this is your district, and actually, I think Councilwoman Radvian, I think part of this is also in your district. So, this is Jabez Branch. This project actually has been around since I started at DNR, so probably since 95. It's a pretty comprehensive coastal restoration project, trying to address some of the large flooding issues within this area, large erosion issues in this area, and downstream pollution to the Severn River. So this project, as I mentioned before, you know, I want, this is one of the projects that I want to get into construction within our first year. It's currently in construction, I expect to be completed towards the end of March, so hopefully we can get you guys out there to take a look at it. And it's, you can see in the picture here, you know, the banks are overhead when you walk through it, and when it's done, you guys won't even recognize it. Eltonia Cars Beach, and this is where, you know, under that kind of mindset of helping the county and the city deliver projects more efficiently, effectively using our expertise. This is a coastal restoration project, trying to stabilize this area with the, the city park that was purchased this, over the past couple of years. So this project is about to go out to bid for construction, and again, my hope is, once that project's awarded, within 18 months, we'll have a, a more resilient and stable shoreline coastal restoration, coastal environment there. We have a 30% design for that project completed. Anorondle County, electric vehicle infrastructure project, so we're helping the county transition its fleet, we're focusing on helping to implement its EV infrastructure, again, focusing on county facilities, county fleet. We ran an RFP, we had 45 companies across the country express interest, we got, we're currently reviewing those proposals, real good response, hopefully we'll be able to select a qualified applicant to help start this process within the next month. This is one of the ones where I mentioned, as far as kind of that regional focus, this is a Baltimore, it's called the Metropolitan Statistical Area. So this is, we worked with the counties involved in the Baltimore Metropolitan Council, so this is from Hartford County down through to Queen Anne's County, to really look at how we can take advantage of this EPA granting fund, grant funding, to develop strategies on a regional basis to reduce greenhouse gas, gases to our region. So it involves all those different counties, there's a million-dollar planning grant, and I think the, the important thing here is, once we complete this mandated EPA planning grant, it avails us to about $4.5, $4.6 billion worth of implementation dollars. Chestnut Hill Cove, this is in Councilmember Volkey's district. This was a community infrastructure project, significant erosion and flooding happening in this downstream community, but also the project is helping to protect the BG infrastructure lines that you see there, as well as the largest sewage treatment plant in that region. This project is about to begin construction later this spring, so again, once, about 18 months, and we should be done with that project. Putting assets to work, you guys may remember this, or may not, from my talk about a year ago. So this was a, under, an effort that we submitted to the Government Financing Officer Association, to be a community, to look at community-owned infrastructure that could be managed in a certain way, that could provide resources for other community benefits. And of course, you know, we looked at resilience. We were one of six communities selected across the nation, along with the communities I have listed on the slide. So that project, working with the governor, Governors, Government Financing Officer Association, and a group called the Sorenson Institute, they looked at all the potential community-owned infrastructure within the city of Annapolis that had the potential to provide resources to help advance our, our, our county goals. A good example, Annapolis City Dock, that was a city-owned garage, they looked at how to manage this in a different way. It was done through a public-private partnership and provided $25 million worth of concession payments to begin the city dock project. One other one is, we were the, one of the first partners to be selected as part of the Governor's inaugural year for the service year for the Maryland Corps. We currently have a Corps member working, helping to put grants together, working on projects with us, and her term limits is, we got her until about the end of June, but she's been fantastic and has really helped me go after some of these funding opportunities. So here's the initial project portfolio. These are the projects that were identified, potentially be shovel-ready. So you can see the ones that currently have funding, and some that are under review, and certainly under, of your interest, Chairman Pickard, Glenburnie Town Center, there's some state grants out there we applied for. We're currently looking at a large EPA grant that has the potential to kind of infuse some resources into this. So, another one of interest, Councilmember Ledbetter, is the South County Project Delion Peninsula. So that's a project that, there's, we currently have a grant out, application to NOAA, that hopefully gets favorable reviews, we'll say. And then one other one, Marley Creek, and again, talking about the regional side of things, there was a partnership with Anorondle County, Baltimore County, Baltimore City, and Howard County, to undertake this large community resilience restoration effort within the Patapsco, mid-Patapsco area. We were able to put forward about $10 million worth of projects in Marley Creek into this application. It is the only application within the state of Maryland that was selected to move on for final review, so hopefully if that gets reviewed, a lot of partners involved, but if that gets a favorable review, we'll have $10 million help us move forward with some projects in Marley Creek. And looking forward to year two, certainly, I'm going to show you guys that we can implement what we've been awarded, so that's where, you know, we're really trying to shift our focus to getting these projects done and in, on the ground, developing our year-two grant funding strategy, and Councilwoman Ledbetter, I was just down on Friday, down in both Columbia Beach and Holland Point, the furthest community down, and trying to figure out a strategy to address some of that community flooding issues. And as I mentioned earlier, and coupling with that kind of one-to-three-year initial project portfolio grant strategy, you know, how to be more proactive, start looking at the projects that are, when implemented, are the best priorities to help this region become climate-ready, so developing that kind of portfolio of projects and financing playbook, kind of that forward-looking plan going forward. Fort Meade, Councilmember Smith, if he was here, this is a partnership with the Fort Meade, trying to, similar to what was done here in Anorondle County with the Naval Academy, to identify specific vulnerabilities and risks within the community that helps support military installation readiness, so we're looking to develop that partnership with Fort Meade, and then private shoreline restoration. Actually, Chairman Picker, this was, this, I think, work session came out of, we had that Leadership Bay Anorondle meeting, in which you asked a question about private shoreline, and, you know, I think there's some misunderstanding about this shoreline being all privately owned, that I'd love to talk with you further on, but Councilmember, Chairman Picker mentioned that it's going to be a good opportunity to kind of come in and talk about, provide an update in the resilience authority. But that is an area, obviously with more than 500 miles of shoreline here in the county, and about, you know, 93% of the land to reach that shoreline is privately owned. It requires us to look at this and come up with a strategy, but certainly a lot of the shoreline and where we do the work provides a lot of public benefit, so that's why it makes sense for us to work in that, in that area. That's it. So I tried to get through quick, because I knew we were running late.
I appreciate that. Do we have questions for Mr. Fleming, Ms. Radvian?
Thank you. I just want to start by saying thank you for all the work you're doing. It's amazing how, it seems like you're really on the front edge of getting some grant funds to our county, and it's great that the service year, I don't know, what are their titles? Interns? Are they in?
Corps members, service corps members.
Service corps member, and it's great that they've been able to help out with that. I really have just two questions, and the first one is about the Jabez project. So, outside of the council, I'm also a member of the Severn River Commission, and the Severn River Commission has been discussing recently that the Department of Public Works has been in discussion about putting a facility, they've been looking at different sites, to put a facility that would be right next to where the current Millersville Landfill and Recycling Center are, and that is very close to, and very much in the, I'm sorry, it's morning, it's very close to the project, and could very much impact the project. And so I'm very curious if there have been conversations about that, about, you know, possible mitigation that would be needed, or if that's on your radar at all.
It's, it is not on my radar, but I think the, the benefit of being so closely connected with the county and the city, is I have contacts now within the county where I can reach out and have that conversation, make sure that they're aware of the project, you know, certainly talking with, you know, Eric Michelson, getting, you know, up to date on it, and how we can kind of be forward-thinking on that.
That would be awesome, because, you know, it'd be a shame to have spent so much money and then do something to negatively impact what's going on there, in terms of the restoration project. My other question is really, you, you've maybe touched on this a little bit, but, you know, in, in District 6, the focus is heavily on the city of Annapolis, which is obviously an extraordinarily important, you know, endeavor, but I'm also hearing from individuals who live in other parts of, of District 6, including both folks who live right on the shore, and folks that live inland but are just in lower-lying areas. And, you know, we've had, and you touched on this a little bit, but I'm just curious if you can provide any more detail about, you know, addressing road flooding? That is, you know, in some situations, there's things that might not be related to climate change, but in some situations, it definitely is related to climate change. And then, you know, any sort of help or relief for individual homeowners, whether they're on the shore, or whether they're inland in lower-lying areas?
Yeah, so, I mean, certainly resilience, you know, our road network is, is a focus. So we did, we did submit a grant that we were the lead on, again, working with that, the Baltimore Metropolitan area, those counties, specifically looking at the vulnerabilities of our road networks and where those priorities are. That's currently under review with Department of Transportation, and the reason we did it with that partnership and not just the county, was, I think it made a stronger application for showing this kind of regional network, but also, once awarded, it would, if awarded, I'm being very positive here, if awarded, it would provide resources available that we could implement on a county basis, start targeting that. I have been working with our emergency management folks, our transportation folks, to identify vulnerabilities and how to put those projects into our next project portfolio, as well as kind of that forward-looking, resilient-ready Anorondle. So I think there's an opportunity to continue to further that, that look and that lens. And then, just one last bit on, specifically to your district, so one of the applications that we did look into, and this is for all of the Severn, so crossover several districts, is there's a NOAA grant out that was looking at transformative habitat and coastal resilience on a watershed basis. So we selected the Severn, and the reason we did that is, one, is it, you know, it's largely built out, so it's an opportunity to show improvements, and it allowed us to use some of the, the new information that's coming out of the Chesapeake Bay program about doing work within the shallows, so that project's going to provide us a specific project portfolio, if funded, that would look at all the private shorelines and opportunities, and working with folks like the Severn River Commission, the Severn River Association, as well as other groups within the city and the county to implement those projects. So, I'm hopeful that project gets funded, but again, I, I hear you, I think, the, the private shoreline piece.
And could that include inland properties?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah, so it's going, and that's why we looked at it on a watershed basis.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. I really appreciate that additional detail, it's very helpful.
Do we have any other questions for Mr. Fleming this time? Were you done?
Oh, I'm done.
Oh, okay.
You can't tell I'm smiling.
I hope so.
Well, with that, I have one question, obviously, I'm going to ask you about the Glenburnie Town Center project. I was aware of the federal earmark that we are seeking, you know, if Congress can ever pass a budget, we might actually see that. I was excited to see the county has focused some revenue, but then you just mentioned an EPA grant. So do we have a sense of what the total scope of that project could look like?
So I did some initial work with the county to explore, just looking at other projects in the area, you know, Rashfield, Salisbury, the one that you know, as well as some work in New York City. I think there's a lot of opportunity there, we did do some initial scoping, and that's what we're using to kind of build out the EPA grant, which we're in the process of, of working through right now.
Oh, you're working, you haven't applied for yet?
I haven't applied for it, yeah. There was design, design funding that we submitted through DNR, again, focusing on, around the idea of round urban resilience, and trying to incorporate greens, you know, designing, you know, knowing it's DNR, you know, you have the natural resource angle, but trying to design with water to also provide kind of opportunity for activation within the town center, and that's purely for design funding. I think the cap there was like $500,000, so that was, that was, that was the state funding, and hopefully, if funded, that will help be able to leverage some of the implementation dollars to the EPA grant, which we're working on.
Fantastic. Is there a timeline for that?
So that is, the EPA grant is a revolving, has, is it open, doesn't have a deadline, but I'd like to try to get it in this spring, because we've heard from EPA, that kind of the sooner you get it in, the more feedback they can get, give you, so you can kind of be the first in line, so that's our goal.
I appreciate that update.
Absolutely.
It is, I think it has tremendous potential, as you know.
Yeah.
So I'm excited to see what we can do. I'm also aware of how long everything takes to happen, so it's, you know, frustrating. Ms. Radvian?
Thank you. I just thought of one last thing. Is it possible, and maybe this is already in, you know, one of the files that we have, do we, can we get a copy of the presentation from this morning?
Absolutely.
Okay. And it's possible, do we already have it? Okay, thank you. We've got it.
And you should have gotten, we did an annual report that I sent out, and that has more details on each of the projects, though, without me rambling, trying to explain them.
Well, thank you, Mr. Fleming. That was very informative. We appreciate your time.
I appreciate the opportunity.
We're going to move on to our regularly scheduled work session. We do have, may I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution amendment to a bill, or resolution or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole? Is there a second?
Second, Radvian.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any opposed? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the title of the resolution to be introduced this morning.
Resolution number 524, Resolution Selecting SB and Company LLC, an independent firm of certified public accountants to perform the financial audit for fiscal year 2024.
Is anyone opposed to a vote on Resolution Number 5-24 this morning? Seeing no opposition, may I get a motion? Wait, wait, I don't need to do that. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 5-24.
Resolution Number 524, Resolution Selecting SB and Company LLC, an independent firm of certified public accountants to perform the financial audit for fiscal year 2024.
Madam Auditor, this is, relates to you, would you like to share with us?
Michelle Bowler, County Auditor. And we completed a procurement three years ago for a qualified certified public accounting firm licensed in the state of Maryland, to perform the financial audit of the Anorondle County Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, the ACFR, perform a single audit on the schedule of expenditures of federal awards, and to potentially perform other services as requested. The independent CPA firm that performed the financial audit of the ACFR from fiscal year 2021 through 2023 was SB and Company. SB and Company is a Maryland-headquartered minority business enterprise. They are a certified public accounting and business advisory firm, primarily serving the Mid-Atlantic region. They are currently working on the single audit and completed the annual audit not too long ago. The evaluation committee is recommending that SB and Company perform the aforementioned audits for fiscal year 2024, and we are requesting your approval of our recommendation. Thank you.
Is there any discussion or questions for Madam Auditor regarding Resolution 5-24? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the role on Resolution Number 5-24.
Mr. Volkey. Ms. Fidler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
That is one, absent and six in the affirmative, Resolution Number 524 has been passed.
Thank you, everyone. We're going to move on to discussions on pending legislation. We're going to start with Bill Number 4-24. This is an administration bill. Mr. Hunt, you are welcome to introduce your representatives and move forward.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Hannah Dyer, our Deputy Chief Administrative Officer, Ann Badowski, Kelly Lovett, and Ann McLaughlin from the Office of Personnel, and Lori Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. This bill comes out of a personnel process work group that was tasked by the administration at the start of the second term, with reviewing the operations and identifying any changes or enhancements to our personnel processes during, to make through legislation in the second term. There are a number of recommendations, I won't go through them all. I know we've met with all of you and discussed this bill in some detail, so I'm going to turn it over if anyone else at the panel, at the table wants to say anything.
Thank you. So Hannah Dyer, Deputy CIO, I can just very, very briefly touch on the recommendations that appear in the bill before you. There are a dozen or two recommendations that can be accomplished administratively, that can be found in the report, but that are not in the bill. There's only, I think, seven that require legislative approval. And those include adopting an annual process for council approval of the classification plan, with flexibility for changes to be accomplished administratively during each interim period, removing pay scales from the county code while retaining an annual council approval process. And I'll just pause and mention that those first two are the reason that the bill you have is so long, because we're moving, we're recommending moving all of the classification plans and the pay plans that are currently in the code, out of the code, and having those approved.
Bedowski, Kelly Lovett, and Anne McLaughlin from the Office of Personnel, and Lori Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. This bill comes out of a personnel process work group that was tasked by the administration at the start of the second term with reviewing the operations and identifying any changes or enhancements to our personnel processes during, to make through legislation in the second term. There are a number of recommendations. I won't go through them all. I know we've met with all of you and discussed this bill in some detail, so I'm going to turn it over if anyone else at the panel, at the table wants to say anything.
Thank you. So Hannah Dyer, Deputy CIO. I can just very briefly touch on the recommendations that appear in the bill before you. There are a dozen or two recommendations that can be accomplished administratively that can be found in the report, but that are not in the bill. There's only, I think, seven that require legislative approval. And those include adopting an annual process for council approval of the classification plan with flexibility for changes to be accomplished administratively during each interim period, removing pay scales from the county code while retaining an annual council approval process. And I'll just pause and mention that those first two are the reason that the bill you have is so long, because we're moving, we're recommending moving all of the classification plans and the pay plans that are currently in the code out of the code and having those approved as exhibits, attachments to ordinance moving forward. So the body of the bill that you all have is only ten pages, I think, and then there's another 80 or 90 or more pages of those pay and classification plans. The other recommendations include allowing greater flexibility for pay at hiring by realigning approval tiers for the hiring salary, allowing greater flexibility for pay on promotion, allowing greater flexibility for reclassifications to be accomplished through administrative processes, and allowing greater flexibility for a qualified employee in a nonrepresented job class to be assigned temporarily to act out of class. This bill also includes a provision to increase annual leave rollover for employees from 35 days to 40 days, in line with other peer jurisdictions. And as I think Ethan mentioned, these recommendations, as well as several others, that do not require legislation, are discussed in the workgroup report that was distributed a couple weeks ago, and we can elaborate on any of these recommendations or answer any questions that you all have.
Thank you. Do we have questions for the panel regarding bill 4-24? Oh, Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for meeting with us in advance. One of the questions that I had, and I'm not recalling the answer off the top of my head, but being able to have flexibility kind of behind the scenes before you get to the council. My question at the time was, is there, does this set us up for a scenario where a person is moved into a new position, but then it comes to the county council and we don't agree with that change, and that person is then out of a position because, you know, we've moved people around and now there's not a pin for them to go to?
Yes. So there is the possibility that we, the administration, through the administrative process defined in the bill, could make a change to the classification plan, move someone into that new classification, and then during the annual approval of those changes, council could decide to reject one of those changes. The bill does spell out a process for if that happens and it affects a filled position, then it would fall to the personnel officer to reassign that individual to the next closest classifications based on their qualifications and the job duties. So no one would just be out of a job. There would just be a change, you know, the classification would revert based on the council action, and the individual employee would be moved into a new classification.
Would that, in that scenario, would someone stay at a lateral salary position, or is there the possibility that that person could go to a lower pay grade?
So the bill also defines, and Anne or Lori, please correct me if I'm getting anything wrong, but it also defines that the salary changes have to be in line with current sections of the code. So the intent is not that anyone's salary would be decreased, that that would be maintained. It's just moving that individual into a classification that is in line with what the council actions are.
Thank you. Ms. Hummer.
And this is just follow-up on that. So to give an example, one change that we did this past year for that was Park Ranger. We created another level of Park Ranger. So under this new code, if this had come to us at the end of the year for the changes and the council had disagreed with creating a Park Ranger II, that person who had been moved to Park Ranger II would just be moved back to Park Ranger I or vice versa. I might be getting it wrong.
Yeah, so if we, in that example, if we, you know, during the annual council approval, the classification that was approved is just Park Ranger. And then in the middle of the year, personnel does a study, we go through the administrative process and create a Park Ranger I and a Park Ranger II, and then we get to the next annual council approval point and council rejects that change. Then everyone, I think, would probably just fall back into, you know, we wouldn't have the Park Ranger I and Park Ranger II classifications anymore, but we would have that Park Ranger classification that existed, and everyone would fall back into that classification.
And, but maintain their salary, but they'd just be, the classification would revert back to what it was. Right. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Radveen.
Thank you. I know, at least in my memory, I can't recall a situation where the council has, you know, denied a request for reclassification, but, you know, my memory is only five years, and I'm curious if that's something that you've looked at to see if that has been, if that, our current pattern is consistent further back.
Yeah, that's a great question, and it is something that the workgroup looked at. We, and one of the appendices in the report, I don't remember off the top of my head which one, but there is a list going back 10 years, I think, so across different councils, across different administrations, looking at all of the personnel bills and the outcomes. And there were, you're right, the large majority of those were passed by a 7-0 margin. There were a couple, maybe three, that either failed or did not pass by a 7-0 margin.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you so much for the meeting that we had. It was incredibly informative. And I know at the time, we discussed, you presented the advantages, the efficiencies that represented in this bill, and I was just hoping you could, for the record, kind of speak to those one more time.
Sure. So this workgroup really came out of the county executive speaking with department heads in the time between the first and second term and identifying some of the challenges and areas for improvement. And that timing of being able to fill positions was consistently one of the barriers that our department heads identified. So in looking at, you know, in the workgroup and looking at, you know, the legal framework, the processes that we have in place right now, it, we just identified that there's, it can be a lengthy process from the department maybe identifying some change if they have someone who leaves county service, for example, and reevaluating the needs associated with that position before posting it. If they want to change that, they have to go to the Office of Personnel. The Personnel Office has to do a study of that position before recommending any change and bringing it to the administration. And then we, a bill has to be drafted currently with the Office of Law and then sent down to council, and then it has to be advertised. You all have to do your review of it before it's passed, and then the department can move forward with whatever the position change may have been. So just that, and in looking at kind of that past history of council review of personnel bills, we just found that, we believe that council relies on the expertise in the Office of Personnel who's doing those personnel studies with each of these actions. And so that timeframe at the end there is really what we were trying to streamline and consolidate into an annual approval process, not that we're taking council out of these processes, just making it more of a one, a one point in time rather than all the time because these are actions that are happening all the time.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Radveen.
Thank you. In your discussions in preparing this, what were your discussions with the various bargaining units? Because obviously, there's a lot of folks and, you know, agreements that could be impacted.
So we really intentionally stayed away from any changes that would affect any specific bargaining units because we're sensitive to the annual negotiation process that the Office of Personnel does with those bargaining units. So there's nothing specifically in here that affects anything that they negotiate on their own or have negotiated or will. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I don't see any further questions. We appreciate your time this morning, especially on this nasty weather outside. We'll move ahead to bill number 5-24. It is also at the request of the county executive concerning the Board of Education.
Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table are Matt Stansky from Anorondal County Public Schools and Lori Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. So bill 524 is intended to make a supplementary appropriation and transfer appropriation for unanticipated revenues to the local education fund for fiscal year 2024. And I can turn it over to Mr. Stansky for a more thorough explanation that I can give.
Good morning, everyone. Matt Stansky, Chief Financial Officer, Anorondal County Public Schools. I'll just give you a brief overview, and myself and my colleague Melissa Camillo will be happy to answer any questions you have. So total is just shy of $45 million in additional appropriation. So we'll walk through, so 15.6 million of it is federal, state, and local unrestricted funds. So the vast majority of this is authorizing use of additional fund balance to fund one-time initiatives to, for a variety of items. I'll walk through some of those. We have $5 million dedicated to the opening of Severn Run High School and Two Rivers Elementary School. So these will be startup funds specifically around materials of instruction, things like that. We did recently adopt the science of reading and have a vendor now in place to get us materials, and so we're looking for a $2 million appropriation to get that up and running. The ongoing cost of that program is built into our existing curriculum adoption budget moving forward, but we did need some money to start that up for this year. We are asking for $1 million for additional security radios and cameras. Some of our radios are ending their useful life, and so we need to upgrade those as well. Dr. Bedell has announced, and the board has announced, a kind of reimagining of Moss Adams School as well as the Phoenix Academy. And so we are creating, the Phoenix Academy is our sole alternative education center for middle and high school students, and the Moss Adams facility will become a new special education center. And so we're asking for $625,000 there to do some upgrades to the facility in order to make that happen for next school year. And then finally, a $5.5 million appropriation into our healthcare fund. We ended fiscal '23 having to use about $11 million of our healthcare fund balance. We saw a 12.6% increase in our claims, and so we are looking to use this payment to help sort of stabilize the fund and get it, keep it on its solid footing. We're happy to report that this year, we're back into the 1% to 2% increase in claims at the moment. Obviously, month to month, we're monitoring that, but for fiscal '23, it was larger than normal. On the restricted fund side, we're looking for $13.7 million. This is mostly in federal grants, and this is 13 restricted programs, and it's a combination of competitive grants that we were awarded after the fiscal year started, as well as any adjustments to any existing grant awards that were, that were lower, that were higher than what we were anticipating when the budget was adopted. There are also two restricted programs at the state level that we are making adjustments for there as well. And then finally, $15.2 million. And again, this is for the healthcare fund. This is to use, continue to use healthcare fund balance as well as increases in employee and retiree contributions. So with that, Madam Chair, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. I see Ms. Hummer and Ms. Fiedler. Ms. Hummer, questions?
Yes. So the reimagining of Phoenix and Mary Moss, you said Mary Moss would become a special education center. What would it, a regional center, what would it focus on?
Yep. So again, a regional center. We have seen a significant uptick in our non-public placements in special education. So we have to, we're looking really for a more cost-effective way to serve those students. Non-public tuition can be anywhere from $40,000 to $80,000, depending on the student that's being served. And so we're looking, again, for autism program, early childhood type services to be provided at that facility.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you. So in Madam Auditor's note, there is an appropriation, an appropriation decrease in instructional salaries and student transportation services. Could you touch on those two?
Absolutely. Yeah, so I think both are directly related to summer school. Again, we were anticipating certain expenditures happening, and so this is out of our SER grants, and so they came in less than what we were anticipating, both on the instructional salary side as well as transportation. So we're making estimates for those summer programs. They came in lower than anticipated, and so that reduction in appropriation is reflected in this transfer.
Perfect. May I ask a follow-up?
Of course.
I love every time you say "science and reading." Love it. Keep coming back and talking about it. But my question is, aside from this investment, do you have an estimate over the next five years, over any period of time?
I think the contract is, I'll give you a range, $7 to $9 million over a five-year period. Yeah, so it's a significant, significant investment, right? It's pre-K through five. We're essentially ending the materials that we've been using and both, this is both digital subscription licenses as well as what we call consumables, right, books that we, that teachers use to instruct. So it's a lot of, you know, hands-on stuff, but yeah, significant investment. And this is on top of, we just redid our elementary math curriculum as well, and so looking to really hit those early young learners heavy. And so I think under the leadership of Dr. Bedell and Dr. Duarte, our chief academic officer, we're making those investments, and we think they'll pay off in the future.
I appreciate that. And just one more question. How long was the previous reading curriculum in place? Because this is, it's a big investment, but I also understand the necessity behind it.
Yeah. So we did not have one sort of adoption for elementary reading for probably 10 to 15 years. It was a series of different, you know, materials that we would use in the curriculum was written in-house, whereas now we're using a external vendor. Some of it is through, obviously, fund balance. We're also using our Maryland Leads Grant to help procure this as well. Obviously, there's been a big push nationally and at the state. There's actually legislation that's going to potentially require all districts to do it. I don't, I don't think that's necessary. I think all 24 of us have moved towards it now. But yeah, so it has been 10 to 15 years since we actually had a new curriculum adoption in elementary reading.
Great. Thank you.
Ms. Radveen.
Thank you. So I'm going to start with one question that I thought of while Ms. Fiedler was speaking or Councilmember Fiedler was speaking. On the new curriculum that you're adopting on the science of reading, is there data supporting, you know, that other districts have used it and it's producing positive results?
So we, so because we are using Maryland Leads funding, we had to pick from a series of vendors that was approved by the Maryland State Department of Education. So they went through an initial screening, and then we did our own RFP. Obviously, data supporting that the effectiveness was used as one of the criterias for success. We had a group of elementary school teachers and literacy specialists that were on the review panel that helped us, that helped select that, ultimately, that vendor.
Thank you. Now, on a different topic, this actually goes back to Ms. Hummer's question, sort of the flip side. It's great to hear that you're, you know, expanding services for special education students where we might need placements outside of, you know, the general education population or the general education schools, the comprehensive schools. But I'm also curious about the flip side impact of that is, my understanding is that, you know, Mary Moss has had a waiting list at times, and so, you know, and if Phoenix is going to absorb the students from Mary Moss, is there, just, I guess, tell me about that. What's the plan for that?
Sure. I think number one was, it became too difficult for a single building administrator to handle both the special education wing and an alternative education wing in the same building. So we had to, first was to kind of get that separated. So obviously, Phoenix is going to be our main alternative center. We're really now looking at virtual options as well for students who, in the alternative setting, to, who just coming to school, being in a building, just isn't working for them. And so obviously, we have our virtual academy, but we also have other virtual options for those students. And so hopefully, with the opening of Phoenix, we can absorb the, obviously, absorb the Moss population, maybe able to offer a few more seats. But it is something that we are actively working on because there are acute, unique needs for that population that we're, to be perfectly frank, we're not meeting. And so we're, you know, we're looking at solutions. Obviously, going through our strategic planning process, one of the things will be other alternatives for our students to be able to be successful in whatever setting is most appropriate for them.
Thank you for that. It's definitely great to be thinking outside of the box. You know, that's what we need to do more of to find, you know, if we find, if we know something isn't working, then we need to be looking at what the other options are. I guess my concern about, you know, hoping for virtual or looking at virtual as a solution is just the lack of adult supervision that can be involved there. And so I don't know, how, is there any talk of like virtual education centers or something like that where there could at least be adult supervision?
Sure. So every one of our high schools has a digital learning So every one of our high schools has a digital learning center, and so those can potentially be used. But yeah, I mean, every student's situation is unique, and we're going to work to put them in the best situation possible to be successful. And hopefully, whatever it is, it's a short-term solution to, obviously, our goal is to integrate them back into their home school, middle or high school. But I think what we're looking for is to have more than just one or two tools in the toolbox. We want to have as many tools as possible.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I don't see any further questions, so thank you.
Thank you.
For all the information.
Yep.
We're going to move ahead. You'll see on your agenda to Bill Number 10-24. This is also a county executive bill. We're going to hold off on our general development plan, region plan conversation until the end, so that's why we're skipping a little bit. But Mr. Hunt, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me still is Matt Stansky from Anorundal County Public Schools, Chris Trumbauer, our Budget Officer, and Lori Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. So Bill 10-24 is to approve the amended and restated Retiree Health Benefit Trust Agreement for Anorundal County, the Community College, the Board of Education, and the Public Library Association of Annapolis and Anorundal County. It approves the amended Retiree Health Benefit Trust to enable Anorundal County Board of Ed to join the county's OPEB Trust, which is consistent with the FY 2024 budget. And as stated in Bill 6823, this legislation does not stipulate future county investments into the OPEB Trust. We are happy to answer any questions.
It doesn't appear the council has any questions, but Mr. Trumbauer would like to speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. I just want to take one second on the record to thank the component units for their participation and adding the Board of Ed. So the Community College and the Library are also trustees for our OPEB Trust. And what the agreement does is it kind of retools the Board a little bit to make room, if you will, for our Board of Education members. And this will obviously enact the funding that the council approved in this current year budget to set this up. So this is a good news story. I want to thank the council, and I want to thank the Board of Ed and the component units for coming together and signing this, you know, 26-page agreement, which you have as an exhibit. So thank you very much.
Thank you. As there are no questions, we're going to move on to Bill Number 11-24. Ms. Radvian, this is your bill.
Thank you. So you may recall, I introduced legislation on this topic sometime in 2023. 2023 is already such a blur. I'm not sure when in 2023. But I'm still looking to solve this issue that is unfortunately still continuing. And so what this bill does is basically prevents someone from shooting a firearm across the property of someone else unless they have that person's permission. And the person, you know, if there is a complaint that's brought forward, the person, you know, is the, this bill provides one warning because, you know, I understand that especially laws like this may not, you know, become common knowledge among the 580,000 or 600,000 residents of the county right away. And so, you know, it can serve as notice to the individuals involved. But it will also prevent homeowners that do not want bullets flying across their property to have a mechanism to stop it and say, that person does not have written authority to have a bullet that they've shot from their firearm flying across my property. So that's really how it's set up, and happy to take any questions and hear any thoughts from the administration.
Mr. Hunt, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me, I have Mike Shire from Anorundal County Police Department and Lori Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. We're supportive of this legislation. We're here to answer any questions.
Ms. Hummer.
Yes. So you addressed it, Ms. Radvian, but my question was, why are we just initially giving a warning rather than charging right away? It makes sense what you said, to give people time for some notice, but I would hope that we would very quickly, if someone continued, that there would be charges if you were firing anything onto my property without my permission, that we would be following up with that very quickly.
Yeah. And I think it's important to recognize this problem mainly exists in the more rural, less densely populated areas. So I'm aware of a situation in District 6 where, you know, a person has a multi-acre wooded property. Their neighbors all have multi-acre wooded properties, and so they, you know, often are, I don't know what they're doing, I guess, you know, but hunting is something you could imagine. I know farmers are often, you know, concerned about deer control, so I know that this has come up in District 7. And actually, I know that there is a sort of an unofficial firing range that has occurred in District 3 where stray bullets are flying onto a neighbor's property. And that, I mean, this seems like it's so obvious. How is there not already a law to prevent this? But I really think that because this behavior is ongoing, maybe, I would say that maybe in, you know, a few years, we could, actually, if the council is comfortable taking out the warning provision, I'm not going to fight that really hard. But at the same time, I do think, you know, people have, if they've grown accustomed to doing something and their neighbor has never said anything, then I think a warning is a fair, you know, a fair response to start with, especially when we're talking about large wooded areas where someone may be hunting and they don't know where property lines are, and this and that. So it's, I will agree that it's generous, but I'm also, you know, willing, if my colleagues want to entertain the idea of, you know, not, of taking out that warning provision.
Mr. Shire, do you have any comments on that representing our local law enforcement?
Sure. Lieutenant Shire with the County Police. As a matter of practice, police officers are generally going to issue a warning in these circumstances regardless of whether or not required. Oftentimes, these situations are inadvertent on the part of the citizen who's technically violating the law, and we're going to try and solve the problem by giving them a chance to just comply with the law as written and move forward from there as opposed to dragging them before the criminal justice system. If there's something that causes this to raise to a level where there's some type of recklessness, where somebody's placed in danger, there's other criminal laws that can be applied immediately within the Maryland Criminal Code that would address that.
Thank you. Ms. Fiedler.
Oh, sorry. Is it all right if I jump in line just to respond to that? The situations that I have, that are the basis of this, of this bill, are situations where there was a conversation with the person, and they did not stop the behavior. Maybe they stopped it on that particular day, but it repeated in the future. And so it's been an ongoing problem for the neighbor to have, you know, bullets flying across their property, which I think we could all agree, that it's very reasonable to expect that you can have your property free from bullets flying from your neighbors, even if you live on a large wooded property.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In practice, if the bill passes, knowing that there's large acres of property, someone on the property is shooting, I would assume there would be some kind of eyewitness report necessary or video footage. How do we determine who on the property is doing the shooting?
Lieutenant Shire with the County Police. Just our basic investigation, we're going to go out there. It's sometimes difficult, sometimes impossible. When it's a very large acreage trying to find somebody, we might not be able to find them, but oftentimes, we do. And, you know, we were able to find the person who's got a firearm, and we talked to him. We say, hey, where are you shooting from? Where are you shooting to? We want to make sure you're safe. Most of the people who are doing this are not intentionally trying to cause a danger. If they are, then that will be more obvious, and like I said, other laws apply. But they're not actually attempting to cause a problem in those circumstances where it is a repeated issue, where a homeowner has brought that up to the attention of the person, then it becomes a little bit more, you've got a little bit more evidence built up because generally, the complaint is going to have some, they're going to be the eyewitness, and they're going to have some evidence of the fact that this is going on. You can see when a bullet lands on the ground, it'll sometimes create a divot or something like that. It helps us figure out where it's coming from, et cetera. So just by all reasonable means, we can figure out who's responsible. It doesn't always require an eyewitness, but certainly, that's helpful. But just our normal investigative means for this kind of thing.
Thank you. Ms. Radvian.
Thank you. And I do want to just clarify my, you know, even though this is happening in a few situations, my understanding among, after the first iteration of this bill, having conversations with the hunting community in particular, that they believe that each other, you know, when they are, you know, when they are hunting in, you know, proximity or proximity to homes, that they are already excruciatingly careful. So this is not intended to target the people that are following the rules, which I do believe is the vast majority of firearm owners and hunters, that they are following the rules and they are, you know, keeping safety at the top of their mind. Unfortunately, there's a few bad actors, and that's what laws are for.
Are there any further questions on 11-24? Seeing no more lights, we're going to move on to Bill Number 12-24 concerning SCBD districts. That is also Ms. Radvian's bill. You have the floor.
Thank you. So this is another bill that has arisen after conversations with constituents who have been looking for higher levels of accountability for their, the officers of their SCBDs, and that's a special community benefit district, for folks that are not in the know, like I was when I started my work on this council. It's basically like a neighborhood can create its own little tax district and say, we'd like to collect taxes for the purposes, you know, relevant to our neighborhood. Maybe a lot of times in Anorundal County, it's for things related to their waterfront property. So this does a couple of things. It basically requires all of the officers to, I don't want to say attend because the training is online, but receive training from the state regarding the Maryland Opens Meeting Act, Open Meetings Act. And there are several steps of consequences for officers, SCBD officers that are not, that are not complying with, if we get, if, sorry, if we have an SCBD that's not complying with the Open Meetings Act and other provisions in their own bylaws, then this provides other members of that SCBD, the folks that are paying into that SCBD to have some way to hold them accountable.
The administration have thoughts on Bill Number 12-24?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table are Chris Trumbauer, our Budget Officer, and Janey Molden, who oversees the administration of some of the SCBD funds, and Lori Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. And we're just here to answer questions.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If this bill were to pass, I would assume there would be some type of notification to existing SCBDs and then advanced notification for any new SCBDs moving forward.
That's actually not in the bill, but I think that would be a great amendment. I don't know if that would, you know, something we need to put in the bill explicitly, but I think that's a very reasonable expectation that SCBDs get notified.
Thank you. Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a question from a special community benefit district in my district. That feels like a lot of districts. They were just curious as to if there was a specific, something specific that prompted this, that you could speak to or...
Yes. I don't feel, I don't necessarily feel appropriate going into too much detail because it is a dispute among neighbors, but it's a dispute among neighbors about how the SCBD funds are being used, the transparency involved, the amount of input that the members of the SCBD are being allowed the opportunity to provide in terms of decisions relating to how the funds are used.
And, Madam Chair, my follow-up? Thank you. And I don't want to put words in your mouth, but would it be fair to say that perhaps a goal of this legislation is to increase transparency and prevent further neighborhood disputes in the future?
100%. That's exactly what it is. And to give, you know, to give residents who are members of an SCBD community a path to holding their officers accountability and to make sure that their SCBD is operating in compliance with county law.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
I just have a quick question. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but we have numerous SCBDs. Is that correct, Ms. Molding?
Correct. So we have 80 SCBDs, and then we have about 20 SECDs and Waterway Improvement Districts.
Thank you. Do we have any further questions on Bill Number 12-24?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Do we know the cost of training for open meeting?
The training is free. You do it online. Yep. Through the Attorney General's Office.
Great.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. If I may, Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. So the Budget Office has obviously looked at this bill, and we certainly understand the concept of it. But what the legislation does do is it puts the Budget Office essentially in charge of compliance. And I'm just curious if the sponsor has thought through what the expectation is for that to look like. Like, right, let me give you a little bit of background. Right now, we don't, the Office of Budget doesn't micromanage districts, right? What they're doing is they're using the county as a vehicle to collect assessments for their projects and things, right? And so there's an audit process, and there's a coordination process and all of that. But if a district, if this was to pass and the district was to not be in compliance, I'm not entirely sure how our office is supposed to monitor that. Were you thinking that there's just a simple, we've received notification when a SCBD has completed the online training, and then we check a box in our annual process? Or is it a more deliberate oversight role that you were contemplating? Because that might be challenging, given the current way we operate.
Yeah. I think it's still going to be largely up to individual members within this SCBD to be holding, you know, each other accountable. But this allows them to come, and my understanding actually would be the Office of Finance. Is that budget? Okay.
The legislation is written as the Office of Budget.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
If you want to change it to Finance, I'm not going to argue with you, but I think Ms. Penley may rush down here.
I'm trying to, it's, my computer is flaking out on me. I'm trying to get the language of the bill in front of me, so I have it so I can, oh my, thank you.
But it sounds like, Councilmember, that you were, it sounds to me like maybe you're thinking it's going to be a complaint-driven process where
Absolutely.
We don't monitor it per se, but if the district itself thought there was a violation, they would bring it to our attention. And in that case, we may work with the Auditor's Office or the Office of Law or something to what? To investigate? I'm not sure.
I really think most of the issues that are causing, that this bill intends to address are things that could be addressed through documentation, you know, providing notice to the community, having gone through the Open Meetings Act training, you know, having, you know, having meeting minutes that show certain things happened in a meeting, you know, in terms of how the meeting was operated and who was in attendance. So I would imagine documentation is going to be the biggest mechanism for enforcement.
And then I, actually, Madam Chair, I have a question for the Office of Law, maybe if Ms. Klosmeyer would entertain from the table. This legislation provides a means to disband the district if they're willfully uncompliant, I guess. Is there any other situation that would allow for the disbanding of a district? Would this be the first such measure in our code?
We do have language concerning dissolution. That's generally when it is requested by the district itself
Okay.
to dissolve. And this is, this language is consistent with that, but we don't have any other sanctions, I guess is the word, for any, tied to any other type of behavior or failure.
Okay. So, Madam Chair, the reason I asked that question is because I thought I knew the answer, but I wanted to be sure. But this would, this would provide a way to disband or dissolve a district if they don't meet the Open Meetings Act. But meanwhile, there's no provision, if a district were to overspend its expenditures by $100,000 or do other things, there's no legislative remedy to that. So I just am putting that in context that that is maybe something we would want to think through as well. Like, you could, you could be dissolved if you violate the Open Meetings Act, but not if you misspend the county money or the money that you've collected on behalf of the county.
Yeah. And this is honestly... Yeah, and this is honestly where I think it's awkward that the county is involved with these, with the SCBDs at all. I will say, this is the first place I've ever lived that has them, and I can certainly see why they're a benefit to the communities that have them.
Yes.
But if the county is involved, I do think it's fair to have an expectation that the county has the power to dissolve them. Now, you know, if, for example, they're, you're right, this really checks the process more than, more than maybe specific acts itself, but often specific acts, very often, very frequently, the acts themselves that are not in line with the rules of an SCBD are done without the due process. So it should catch a lot of them. There's also a very long timeline before an SCBD, you know, we're basically giving an SCBD 18 months to come into compliance, which I think is a very generous timeline, you know, for a neighborhood to sort of get its act together, or officers to, you know, start following the rules and bring their community fully into the fold.
Okay. Well, I can share that the Auditor and I have frequent conversations about the complexities of SCBDs, so they are very unique and somewhat even unique to this county. But I think what I might suggest is before the public hearing of this, the Budget Office may be working with the Office of Law, we might, we might just put together a memo with some of the things that we would be interested in clarifying so that we understand the expectation of if this was to pass, what, what the compliance component of that could or should look like, so.
I am very happy.
Again, supportive of the concept, but just want to make sure if this passes, we're able to do what the expectation is.
Very happy to entertain such a memo, or even if the next step of, you know, proposing amendments, very happy to entertain those.
Very good. I just want to make sure Ms. Moulden didn't have anything specific to add.
Nothing specific. I was just concerned about the consequences for, for not complying with the Open Meetings Act and the Maryland Homeowners Act, but I guess that can be addressed with the memo.
Yeah. I'm happy to take a look and have a conversation on that.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So after this discussion, if, let's say there is a complaint, say this bill passes and there is a complaint, then someone in Budget is going to have to investigate the complaint, gather information, much like our zoning enforcement officers, I would imagine. In that timeframe, would the SCBD be affected? Because I know, at least in the SCBDs that exist in District Five, a lot of them are shoreline communities that are in the process of MDE permits that are very time-sensitive and very lengthy. I wouldn't want to inadvertently halt or interrupt that process because they are so extensive, because a complaint is under investigation. I don't see, and if I'm missing something in the bill, please let me know, I don't see anything that either prohibits or allows for the SCBD to continue to operate while under, I guess, investigation of an accusation.
So the way that it's written currently, we would withhold expenditures, and that was one of my concerns. We can't necessarily withhold expenditures. We can withhold distributions from the SCBD. They receive distributions in November, February, and June of each year. However, they already have fund balance, most of them at the community. So they hold community funds and they also get distributed tax revenues at those times. So we wouldn't necessarily be able to hold expenditures from them.
Okay.
To answer your question, if they have fund balance, they would still be allowed to use that fund balance if they have appropriation for it. If they did not have fund balance, they would run into a problem.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to clarify that that can only happen if there is a determination that the SCBD is not in compliance. So that can't happen if there's still ongoing discussion or ongoing investigation between the Office of Law and Office of Budget. Only after there's a determination that the SCBD is out of compliance are those steps taken.
I don't see any further questions. We'll move along. Thank you, everyone. Before we get into region plans, we're going to look at Resolution 3-24, which is the culmination of our small work groups regarding updates and modernizations to our rules. Some of the most significant things in Resolution 3-24 is incorporating our new, semi-new role of filling a vacancy in the office of a member of the Board of Education. There are some other updates regarding the media and the opportunity, potential for virtual or remote participation in meetings. I don't know that, we all worked on this, I don't know that we need, I'm going to go through each of the notes of every title, but if there are questions regarding Resolution 3-24, we can certainly tackle them. This is an opportunity to talk about the two groups' work and coming, having it all Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to note, because this has been of interest to the public, the virtual or remote participation of meetings in 4-113. It starts off with if the technology is available. So I just want to make sure that that is abundantly clear. Just because we're, we're putting in the rules the ability to do virtual or remote, the technology has to be there, and that can sometimes take a bit of time.
Thank you. Yeah, we, we have, as everyone can see, some technical difficulties currently with our lack of screens, but it will, it allows this council to work towards or incorporate a virtual participation, but it doesn't mandate us to do that. Do we have any other questions regarding these updates in Resolution 3-24? Okay, thank you, everybody. Oh, oh, sorry, Ms. Hammer.
No, I just, I just buzzed in late. I just, in Section 4107(c), for members of the media, we have added, "Representatives of the news media shall maintain order and decorum in keeping with the dignity of the governmental process and may not interfere with the process." I did have a question from a member of our media about this, and it's not directed at any individual media member. We, we are saying that the entire public, that we want everyone that comes into our chambers to maintain order and decorum, and we welcome all members of the media. And please know that we are not singling anyone out in regards to that.
Well, we're going to move ahead to the much-awaited region plan discussion with the county executive. I think we're just going to go through Bills 6-24 through 9-24 collectively, correct? I think we have representatives from the Office of Planning and Zoning here to take us through a presentation of region plans 2 and 7 and the process. So we'll let you all get settled. We could, if, if anybody needs a comfort break, this is a time for the council to do that, if we want to take a quick break, because I know the chair does. No, this is a casual meeting. We don't need a motion. We're going to let everybody get, I see a bunch of wires getting set up, so we'll be right back.
Well, good morning to our long-range planning team. This is an exciting morning, I know, for y'all. This is a culmination of a lot of work coming off the Plan 2040. The council will be taking up three, the first three of nine region plans this spring with the corresponding comprehensive zoning changes. So I know this is a lot of work. It'll be a lot of work for this council, and we welcome your presentation today. Mr. Hunt, your team has the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. So as you mentioned, we're here today to discuss the first two of nine of the region plans and their companion comprehensive zoning bills. So the region plan process is outlined in Section 182103 of the County Code and with more detailed information in Plan 2040, which is the county's general development plan. The region plans and comprehensive zoning are a major implementation piece of Plan 2040, and we are very happy to finally be able to be here to discuss them with you, Bills 624, 724, 824, and 924, which are for Regions Two and Seven respectively. With me at the table are Christina Pampa, our Deputy Planning and Zoning Officer, who oversees the Planning Division; Mark Wildonger, a senior planner who has managed the Region Two planning process; Patrick Hughes, senior planner who has managed the Region Seven planning process; Mark Burt, our Planning Administrator of the Research and GIS Section, who oversees the GIS mapping, including the creation of in-document maps and web tools; and Cindy Carrier, Planning Administrator of the Long-Range Planning Section, who oversees the region plan process, is in the audience. And I also have Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law here as well. And with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Pampa for OPZ's presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hunt. Next slide, Mark. So Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning, it's an understatement to say that I'm happy to be here, and I know my team feels the same way. Ms. Pickard, you kind of took the words out of my mouth. This is the culmination of two and a half years of work that started immediately after Plan 2040, the county's general development plan, was adopted by the county council in May of 2021. Much of what we're going to cover today is information that you know, but we feel it's important to put on the record for citizens and stakeholders so that everybody understands what's happened over the last two and a half years and how we've gotten to this point. I'd like to thank Ethan for introducing all of the staff. I'm going to start with a general overview of the relation of the region plans to Plan 2040, our planning process and outreach, and then the structure of each region plan. Then I'll turn it over to Mark Wildonger, who's going to talk specifically about the Region Two plan, but he's also going to talk in general about planned land use and zoning that would apply to all the region plans and comp zoning bills. Patrick Hughes will talk about Region Seven. And then Mark Burt is going to talk a little bit about comprehensive zoning, some of the key information to know, and he's going to do a demonstration of our zoning web viewer, which I think is super important because the council has set up an application process for comprehensive zoning, and there's information in that application that can be obtained from our zoning web viewer, but you have to know how to use it. So with that, let's go to the next slide, and let's talk a little bit about Plan 2040. This is the latest version of the county's general development plan. As I said, it was adopted in May 2021. OPZ worked with other county and state agencies to develop the plan with assistance from a 23-member citizen advisory committee. The plan looks out over a 20-year time horizon to set a vision for where we want to be as a community and outline strategies that will move us in that direction. It is centered on land use, but obviously many other topics are addressed. It sets the policy framework to protect the natural environment, shape development of the built environment, provide public services to promote healthy communities, and support a diverse, resilient economy. Developed through dozens of public forums, it is informed by thousands of comments from the community. There are many common concerns throughout the county, including traffic congestion, school capacity, environmental protection, and housing affordability. Plan 2040 includes goals, policies, and strategies to address these issues and manage development and redevelopment. Moving on to the next slide. So the region plans, Plan 2040 set up a process for smaller regional plans to be carried out to look at ways to implement the goals and policies of Plan 2040 at the community level. Nine regions were established by Plan 2040. We're here today to talk about Region Two and Region Seven. Region Two being in the western portion of the county, containing Jessup, Laurel, Maryland City, Fort Meade, and Annapolis Junction; and Region Seven containing Annapolis Neck, Parole, and Reva. But don't worry, Ms. Fiedler, Region Four will be coming soon with Pasadena, Severna Park, Arnold, and Broadneck. So region plans follow Plan 2040 but are intended to drill down and make recommendations about how to implement the goals of Plan 2040 at the regional level. They provide recommendations on where development should and shouldn't occur and what it should look like, what areas are underutilized or need redevelopment, what areas are environmentally sensitive and need protection. Like Plan 2040, the region plans are policy guides and are not regulatory in nature. The region plans are to be implemented with a range of tools, including the zoning maps, zoning and development codes, capital improvement program, or program, policy, or study initiatives. And comprehensive zoning is part of the region planning process. Let's go to the next slide, Mark. You're already, oh, you are there, sorry. I can't see the screen very well from here. All right, so Plan 2040 and Section 182103E of the County Code also established that a stakeholder advisory committee between nine and 15 members would work to collaborate with and advise staff in the development of the plan and its recommendations. The committees are to be composed of a diverse range of viewpoints and demographics in the region, for instance, longtime or recent residential property owners, members of community or social organizations, local business representatives, young adult representatives, members of school organizations, home builder or real estate developers, or members of government agencies. Their work started with a kickoff meeting in December of 2021, and they met at least 20 times between then and September 2023. There were two resolutions that were adopted by council that appointed each of the stakeholder advisory committees, and there were a couple of additional resolutions that adopted some replacement members. Despite some members resigning due to other obligations during the process, quorum was met and verified at each stakeholder advisory committee meeting. And on behalf of OPZ, I'd like to extend a special thanks to each SAC member for their tireless work on the plans. Their intimate knowledge of their geographic areas and the time they devoted was significant and must be commended. All right, I'm going to admit, this is the longest slide that I have, so bear with me. This really covers our key outreach and engagement phases for the plans as well as comprehensive zoning. You know, the stakeholder advisory committees were kind of like the focal portion of engagement, representing various communities within the regions. But there are obviously a lot more people that live in each region that have an opinion. And so OPZ did a lot more outreach than just work with the stakeholder advisory committees to shape how the plans and the comprehensive zoning would take place. So there was, for instance, an initial questionnaire. You know, what do you like about your area? What's challenging? How do you spend time in the region? And tell us more about where you live. That was open in early December 2021 through March of 2022. We had a feedback map open for three months. Tell us what you love about your region, what you would fix, and what you dream about your region. We did interviews with key stakeholder groups. We had two online, general online community forums that people could attend where they could share what they liked about their communities as well as their thoughts on issues or concerns they had. We did an outreach event at Antirundal Community College to engage students at the college. We had a visioning questionnaire that helped input into what would ultimately become the vision statements in each region plan. That was open from September 15, 2022, to November 1, 2022. And it started to drill down on some of the issues emerging from prior input, like transportation and mobility challenges, regional priorities, mixed use and different residential dwelling types, housing affordability, and of course, the environment. We had additional draft surveys that were out in early 2023. Before we commenced the comprehensive zoning process, we actually sent a postcard to every property owner in the region, letting them know we were starting the process. We also took out ads in the Capital Gazette to let people know that comprehensive zoning was starting. When I first got into planning 30 years ago, everything, all the public notice went out by ads in the paper, and because we still have people that I think rely on and read the paper, they may be a minority, I felt it was important that we should advertise in the paper. So that happened in May of 2023. We also, just skipping forward to the Planning Advisory Board, we advertised in the paper about the Planning Advisory Board meetings that we held. So we released an initial draft zoning map that was open for public comment, and the online comprehensive zoning application, both of these were available from May 1 to June 1 of 2023. The input that we got from the applications, and while that zoning map was open, was fed into what was the first preliminary draft region plan and draft comprehensive zoning map that we made available from July 26 to August 28, 2023. So the public was able, at this point, to see how the strategies laid into the plan and the full context, and could make comments. And then by October, incorporating comments we had received from the preliminary draft region plans and the draft comprehensive zoning map, the plans and the maps went to the Planning Advisory Board in October, and they deliberated in early November. So throughout the process, we supplemented our outreach by using our constant contact email lists and the Wednesday Community Engagement and Constituent Services update from the County Executive's Office to advertise key dates and milestones. We conducted a number of drop-in sessions in various locations throughout the region during opportunities for public input. We wanted to make sure that if people didn't have a computer, they could come meet with us in person to tell us what they thought or to get help in applying for a zoning application. We did a number of tabling events, or we spoke at community events that may have happened within the region. And we also held community meetings when necessary to discuss more local issues. We have a couple of examples of those in Region Seven. Obviously, all the information we gathered through this process went into shaping the plan, the plans and the comprehensive zoning map that you have before you today. Let's move on and talk a little bit about the region plan structure. The region plan structure is very similar to Plan 2040, except that they're thinner documents. We start with a vision statement, which is the starting point for any community's comprehensive plan, and provides a common direction for long-term planning. It's informed by the community and obviously tailored for each region. There's background information, including detailed descriptions of each community within the region. There are four primary chapters dealing with key elements of the region plan. This is very similar to Plan 2040: natural environment, built environment, healthy communities, and healthy economy. There's also an implementation section, which I'll talk about on the next slide, and appendices with tables of the policy areas and planned land use changes. So there is an implementation matrix at the end, which goes through all of the strategies. They identify, the table identifies how each strategy corresponds or builds on strategies that are in Plan 2040. It identifies the implementing mechanism, which you can see are acronyms. Under implementation matrix, those acronyms are defined. That print is so small, I actually had to ask the staff yesterday where it was, so I just wanted to identify for everybody, since I had trouble. And the responsible departments, including the lead in bold, and then the timeframe. Is it an ongoing implementation activity? Is it short-term, midterm, or long-term? A performance measure? And whether the strategy is also supported in the other region plans? And then finally, in the appendices of the region plans, there are tables and maps that note changes in the development policy area and planned land use from Plan 2040. The region plans will amend the planned land use and development policy area maps that are contained in Plan 2040, and the changes are all outlined in the back of the plan. Now, Mark is going to get into this in more detail when he starts to talk about the relationship between planned land use and zoning, but there is no, there are no zoning maps in the region plans or information about the changes. Those are all separate, and that's why we also have separate bills for each of these. So with that, I'm happy to turn it over to Mark Wildonger.
Thank you. Again, Mark Wildonger from the Office of Planning and Zoning. Good morning. I'll speak to the Region Two process, the things that we had heard, items that you'll see then in the plan itself, as well as a general overview of the zoning that we're recommending within Region Two. So from the Region Two plan, what we've heard is that development pressure has an adverse impact on the environment. It can be attributed to increased flooding events, inadequate storm water management, a lack of habitat and wildlife protection, and a lack of protection of forested areas. We also heard that there's a lack of affordable and diverse housing options and gaps in the transportation network. Region Two is largely built out and generally not affordable. Code restrictions limit the potential to develop diverse affordable housing types to help with affordability. Traffic congestion is a primary issue to the region as much as the workforce travels from outside of the area to reach job centers. In addition, there are gaps in the transit and bicycle and pedestrian network. We heard that there's a need for additional park and recreational facilities. There's limited access to parks and green spaces and limited recreational programs for all ages. They also noted that there is a lack of investment in West County schools in general. Looking at commercial options, they noted a lack of quality and essential commercial options that residents desire, new and high-quality retail options such as grocers, childcare facilities, and small businesses. Like Christina had mentioned, one of the key components of this region plan is the vision statement. After receiving feedback from the public through various questionnaires and other outreach opportunities, we shared that information with the stakeholder advisory committee, and they came up with this vision statement. So won't read it all to you out loud here, but again, some of the major themes of this vision statement are the need for environmental protection, enhanced recreational facilities, available accessible transportation systems, as well as community safety. They also note a strong need for continuing and enhancing economic development opportunities, that growth, residential, commercial growth, and industrial growth is balanced, that there are great schools, a full spectrum of housing, both affordability and housing types, that whole range from single-family homes to, say, cottage courts, townhomes, all the way up to multifamily units, looking at mixed use to address housing, address economic development and environmental and transportation issues, and ultimately assuring that there's a high quality of life for future generations. So looking into the specific chapters of the plan, starting with the natural environment, there were five region-specific recommendations, strategies, and 13 county-wide strategies. As we were working with the stakeholder advisory committee, we had a lot of discussion about what the most important issues are, and some of those were very specific to Region Two, others were more county-wide strategies. It wouldn't be a strategy that we addressed with just Region Two. It would be something that we'd want to address countywide. So that's why we break it out into region-specific and county-wide strategies. So again, some of the major themes that you see just for Region Two is the need to protect the Oxbow ecosystem and managing stormwater along Maryland 198. Moving to the built environment, again, 16 region-specific strategies, 50 county-wide, and the major theme for these strategies is to focus development to areas with existing infrastructure and ensuring that residential development includes housing for everyone. So we're hearing that a lot here about housing for everyone, and that the review process prioritizes affordable housing projects. Next slide. One other part, when we were talking about the built environment and where growth should be occurring and what type of growth should be occurring, we touched on mixed use. So mixed use could be typically your residential above a commercial building, where those two uses are integrated, or on the same site where you have in close proximity residential and commercial. That was something that the SAC really identified as a strategy to, again, prioritize development in certain areas and, again, protect some of the environmental areas. So when we went through this process of looking where development should be occurring and how, the SAC discussed key concerns, again, with housing affordability and transportation accessibility. They noticed that the mixed-use zoning districts do not adequately reflect the vision, and instead chose to identify these areas on the planned land use map and the development policy area and overlay map. They recommended the mixed-use zoning districts of the county code be amended to levels of intensity rather than uses. Our current code is set up so that it's transit, employment, residential focused rather than intensity. A revision to the mixed-use requirements would help realize the community's desires for these mixed-use areas. Now, again, because this is following up on Plan 2040, Plan 2040 does address this. It supports this effort via Strategy BE 1.1.5, which recommends reviewing and revising the requirements for mixed-use districts, including those for provision of a combination of uses, consideration of distance to uses, scale, design guidelines, and connectivity between those uses. It should also be noted that several existing overlays, such as the commercial revitalization area, allows expanded uses and greater development flexibility, thereby making certain zoning districts mixed use. To assist with future zoning code changes to the mixed-use designations, design guidelines, capital projects, and other implementation mechanisms, the following descriptions capture a brief snapshot of the envisioned mixed-use areas and where they are in Region Two. Moving on to transportation-related issues, like we generally hear throughout the county, the transit system isn't connecting people to the places they need to be, as well as there is a lack of adequate bicycle and pedestrian facilities. The SAC would like to see a strong effort to employ sustainable strategies. And lastly, we know that there is a severe childcare facility shortage, and that is why we included a strategy to look into ways to incentivize those types of facilities. Moving on to the healthy communities chapter, the community would like to see the youth receive a quality education and ensure there are adequate resources to support that. There's also a strong desire to reuse county surplus land for parks. When we rolled out maps with the stakeholder advisor committee, they noticed that there are certain properties owned by the Board of Education or by the county, and they really identified those as being opportunities where there could be additional parkland or recreational facilities. And then lastly, ensuring that there are community facilities, including a Region Two senior center near transportation hubs so that people can easily access these amenities. And lastly, the healthy economy chapter, again, a majority of the strategies from Plan 2040 apply, but the SAC emphasized the need to employ strategies to revitalize Maryland 198. Plan 2040 apply, but the SAC emphasized the need to employ strategies to revitalize Maryland 198 corridor and ensure that small and minority-owned businesses have the resources to succeed. Jumping into our holding capacity analysis and how it relates to comprehensive zoning. So let me review the results from our analysis. You'll remember the holding capacity analysis conducted for Plan 2040, which is detailed on page 109 of Volume Two of Plan 2040. We've updated these numbers for this region plan. The end result is that in Region Two, there is not enough development or redevelopment potential with existing zoning in the region to accommodate the region's projected growth over the planning horizon. We anticipate that deficit being approximately 3,300 units. Okay, getting into some of our planning wonky terms here, and I tend to abbreviate them. I call development policy areas, DPA, planned land use, PLU. So I know it can be an alphabet soup, but please bear with me as we go through this. Feel free to, you know, let me know if you need any additional clarification on any of these terms. So again, a reminder that our region plans, like Plan 2040, are policy documents, but comprehensive zoning is regulatory and is part of the region planning process. Comprehensive zoning makes recommendations to align the region's zoning with planned land use map as required by state code. The region plan has recommended some updates to the planned land use map as adopted with Plan 2040. Key part of growth management is the development policy area, or DPA, and planned land use map, or PLU. This shows how they relate to each other. The DPA broadly identifies where development and redevelopment are encouraged and where preservation of particular character or natural features are prioritized. Planned land use further guides development patterns based on the vision for the region. DPA and PLU, Development Policy Area and Planned Land Use, set a policy framework that is implemented through zoning, which is regulatory. Zoning is then used to help implement the policies outlined with the development policy area map and the planned land use map. Zoning provides regulatory detail such as type and intensity of uses, and whether they are permitted or not permitted in certain areas. Table 17 in Volume Two of Plan 2040 outlines the relation between planned land use. I have a screenshot in a couple more slides that shows that crosswalk between planned land use and zoning designations. On this slide here, just to pause for a second, I do provide a few examples within Region Two to give you sort of a flavor of how we're identifying and explaining these designations. So for example, Arundel Mills, we're identifying that as just generally a critical economic area within Region Two, really for the county. A place where we do identify where growth is occurring, it's an economic engine for the area. So what would be consistent with that area is a planned land use designation of commercial. Again, Arundel Mills being a commercial shopping center, so we'd get that designation. Currently, the zoning is W1, W being an industrial zone. You'll actually see later that that's proposed to become a commercial zoning district, a C3, I believe. And we do have a couple more examples. Magnolia Creek, a residential subdivision, that has the designation of neighborhood preservation, an area that we don't really see a lot of change happening, just maintaining essentially the status quo for that area, preserving the neighborhood as it is. So you would imagine that then one of the planned land use designations would be low-density residential, something like a one- or two-unit-per-acre residential structure on those properties. And then accordingly, R1 zoning, which is a residential zoning district that permits essentially one unit per acre. So you can see how there is this connection then between those three types of designations. So in our analysis, and let me provide an overview of how we made these recommendations. So in our comprehensive zoning analysis with these regions plans, we started with those higher-level designations, the development policy area and the planned land use, and we ended up with a zoning recommendation. But sometimes we have a zoning recommendation that then necessitates an update to the planned land use or development policy area. And that is based on additional research or new information. We want to make sure that it supports the density in communities of opportunities as well. And so I'll quickly review some of these different types of changes, but hopefully that provides some type of flowchart to look into how we did our analysis here for zoning, planned land use, and development policy area changes. So I'll get into the specific types of changes here now. So the first one is approved planned land use changes. So mapping, like I mentioned, has three components: development policy areas, planned land use, zoning. Development policy areas and planned land use are described and mapped in Plan 2040. Several development policy area overlays are being added in the region plans. We're adding two new ones, which are the corridor revitalization and redevelopment overlay, and the mixed-use overlay. These maps contained in Plan 2040 will be amended in the region plans. Zoning carries the force of law. The planned land use must be established prior to comprehensive zoning, which is why zoning is contained in a separate bill for each region plan. So here's that snapshot of Table 17, where we sort of show that crosswalk between a planned land use designation, what the zoning category would be that would be consistent with that planned land use designation, as well as the types of uses that we would anticipate within that planned land use and zoning. The examples then, on the right-hand side of the slide, illustrate, for example, the Chesapeake Harbor on Edgewood Road in Region Seven, example of how we moved through this analysis, where we have our Plan 2040 planned land use, but the existing zoning doesn't quite match up with those boundaries for that planned land use from Plan 2040, and the proposed zoning now closely aligns those zoning districts to the appropriate planned Okay. The next type of change, this was aligning zoning to parcel boundaries. And I just want to note that in this illustration, again, if you were to open up the digital zoning map, you'd see that some of these zoning district lines don't quite align with the parcel boundaries, but in this particular example, you see that the geometry of that shape in green is very close to what the boundaries of that parcel are. And so what this change essentially does is just align then, because we understand that the intent of that zoning district is to be aligned with the actual parcel. So that's the nature of this change, is to just simply align the zoning district boundaries with the parcel boundaries. I'll note that parcel-specific analysis for consistency between planned land use and zoning has never been done in the county, to our knowledge. As we rely on digital maps for information, their accuracy to show the intent of what is adopted has become more critical. We are intentionally applying a single zoning category to each parcel unless there is documented reason to split-zone a parcel. This will provide integrity to the zoning map and diminish the likelihood of the boundary being arbitrary. While Bill Number 22-23, adopted by council last year, allows OPZ to correct minor misalignments, the timing of the bill was such that this work was incorporated into comprehensive zoning maps for Two, Four, and Seven. We anticipate that moving forward, the correction of misalignments between the parcel and zoning boundaries will become part of the annual OPZ work program and will not be included in future comprehensive zoning analysis and recommendations. Next slide. Another type of change is regarding the open space zoning district and making that more meaningful, aligning it to, having it be more predictable. So the refinement of the OS zone is to align with public parks, natural areas, and areas covered by conservation easement in perpetuity. The OS district was initially created with a 1970s rezoning of the original 1952 zoning map. The OS zone appears to be generally based in part on older FEMA floodplain boundaries, but in our research, there is no documentation for much of the OS boundary, and the justification is unclear. The FEMA floodplain maps have been updated over time and now deviate from the OS zoning district. County code and state and federal laws and regulations have been adopted that include more stringent protections of floodplains, streams, and wetlands as properties develop. These other regulations are more effective and appropriate tools than the zoning map for managing risks of development in floodplains and conserving the natural functions of streams and floodplains. The county proposes to remap the OS zoning district so that it is consistent with the adopted planned land use map categories of conservation, which includes platted floodplains, easements, and other preservation areas, where primary function is conservation in perpetuity, as well as the parks in open space planned land use, which includes public parks and privately-owned areas that provide active and passive recreational amenities. In addition, there are some sites that are recommended for OS to meet Plan 2040 natural environment goals due to the property's significant encumbrance by environmental features. These changes result in a slight increase in the amount of land in the OS zoning district. Moving on to planned unit developments, this is a curveball. It's not actually a change, but a note that we want to just let you all know how we, again, developed these recommended zoning maps. Most of the planned unit developments in the county contain zoning lines that do not correspond with land use density. Many of them run through the middle of subdivisions. So OPZ has created a PUD, a planned unit development layer, that is available to the public on my Anarundel map viewer. The PUD layer helps explain these inconsistencies. So again, this is an example from the Russet community, where you see a whole bunch of colors indicating what the zoning district is. They're cutting across parcel lines, but I've outlined in yellow that that is the planned unit development extent of the boundary, but we have not changed any of the zoning, or we're not recommending a change in any of the zoning districts within that yellow boundary indicating the planned unit development boundary. And I'll note that the colors don't match because there is a transparency that's set on the right-hand side, so, but I assure you that those zoning designations are the same on both illustrations. Lastly, for types of changes, we reviewed the draft zoning maps and public input on them with the Stakeholder Advisory Committee during the months of March and April, and again in June, and then in September. The Planning Advisory Board also reviewed these maps and the draft map before council reflects refinement based on this input. Region Two received 11 comprehensive zoning applications from property owners during the May application window, and then there was another one that was received during the Planning Advisory Board window as well. And they were mainly from four geographic areas: Jessup, Annapolis Junction, Hanover, and Laurel. And again, some of these recommended zoning changes were based on staff recommended changes as well as recommendations from the Stakeholder Advisory Committee via change applications as well. Moving on to statistics, right? So now that we've talked about how all these changes were made, here are some of the statistics that illustrate the magnitude of some of these changes. So a quick note, R, the zoning designations with an R, are about residential, increasing with the amount of density you can provide on that site. C is commercial, with different levels of intensity and/or different types of uses. W indicates our industrial zones, and MXD are mixed-use zones, and they're based on different mixed-use ratios and intensities. You'll also note that we have a Zone SB, small business, I think we're all familiar with that, as well as OS, the open space zoning district. Just a couple highlights from this chart is the RA decreased to zero due to a zoning alignment with property lines in the southeast corner of Region Five. There was a drop in R1 due to a consistency change within the Puxent Research Refuge. MXDR and MXDE was decreased because of these floodplain parcels that have now gone to OS. There's been an increase in the mixed-use transit designation due to the rezoning of the Annapolis Junction area, and the small business was zeroed out in the Jessup area. The increase in C3 is due to rezoning in the Arundel Mills area. There was a decrease in W1, which is attributed to rezoning, recommended rezoning in the Annapolis Junction and Arundel Mills area. And again, like I mentioned with OS, that was due to us aligning that OS zoning district to those variety of criteria. Okay, jumping into some of the actual now, or the communities within Region Two. Generally speaking, for the Jessup area, the Office of Planning and Zoning and the Stakeholder Advisory Committee, we envision a small-scale and mixed-use at the Jessup Mark Station, as well as the Maryland 175 corridor, which we are starting to see some transition at. Future development, though, along that Maryland 175 corridor and at the Jessup Mark Station, that's envisioned to be two to three stories in height and allow for residential, commercial, and office uses. Automobile-dominated uses such as gas stations and drive-through restaurants are discouraged. Then the two other areas of the Jessup community, North Jessup, again, that's our neighborhood preservation area. We don't expect much change in that area and that for it to stay low-density residential. National Business Park to the south is, again, one of the economic drivers, and we anticipate that will continue to do so in the future. In the Hanover area, zoning is really just, the changes that we're recommending are really recommendation based on the actual and intended uses. I mentioned Arundel Mills, which is currently zoned industrial, but we know that's a shopping center, and so we want to recommend that zoning be tailored more towards its actual use. As well as then, the Northern Wright Road, which currently have single-family homes on them, that's also zoned industrial, and the idea there is to rezone it so that it is more of a residentially-zoned neighborhood. And then towards the south, along Maryland 175, at the intersection of Milestone Parkway, there was a planned land use change from Plan 2040, and so taking a cue from that, recommending a couple changes to low-to-medium-density residential in R5 in that area. The general recommendation here is that really gritted network of streets by the train station, and the vision of the Stakeholder Advisory Committee was sometime in the future, if that could really look like what's happening across the railroad tracks at Savage, and how you're starting to see residential and commercial area develop, rather than some of the contractor yards that you're currently seeing in that area. So that was the recommendation there, just for that, again, gritted network of streets. I think it's maybe 30 acres or so. Then the surrounding area, which we're starting to see the larger office buildings or warehouses, those were expecting to stay as industrial. And then lastly, in the Laurel and Maryland City area, some of the major recommendations include, again, a long-term vision for Maryland 198 to turn into some type of mixed-use corridor, looking at maybe five-to-six-story buildings, and encourage redevelopment that promotes additional workforce, housing, commercial, and office opportunities. That way, there's that opportunity to reduce the reliance on single occupancy vehicles and allow for more critical mass to help support transit in that area. I know that was a lot, a lot of wonky planning terms, some very specific items to Region Two, and with that, I'll pass it over to Patrick Hughes.
Thank you. Patrick Hughes, Senior Planner with the Office of Planning and Zoning. And if you'll go to the next slide, please. I'll start by, you got an overview of the process from Christina, and Mark described some similar activities in his region. I'll talk a little bit about some of the additional efforts that we had. I'll talk a little bit about some of the additional efforts that we had regarding outreach specific to Region Seven. We, these included youth outreach, tabling at regional events and and things like the farmer's market, a local Bike to Work Day, Annapolis Senior Center, et cetera. And then we did have a couple of neighborhood-specific outreach efforts, particularly along Best Gate Road, the Gate Drive area, and the Ridgely Avenue area. And some of the key issues that we heard from the public, and this is not an exhaustive list on the screen here, but we did hear, of course, a lot of concerns with development and how it impacts infrastructure and the environment. People have a real appreciation for their parks and open space areas and water access. They appreciate their quiet and peaceful communities, and they appreciate the access to shopping and dining and services and entertainment options that are available in the region. They do have a lot of concerns with traffic and congestion. We hear that all over the county and no less here in Region Seven. People do cite a lack of biking and walking opportunities, concerns about the impact of new development, and a desire to improve traffic flow on our major roadways. And there is a desire for better transit, particularly to for connections to regional employment centers, improving frequency and funding of traffic of transit. Housing affordability came up as an issue, a desire for small-scale mixed-use areas, but coupled with some concerns about how do we deal with parking, traffic and impact on surrounding neighborhoods. And then a lot of, there was a lot of input on enhanced environmental protection, particularly stormwater management, natural shorelines, greening the region, those sorts of things. Next slide, please. So this was our Region Seven vision. Christina discussed what a vision statement is, but you'll see some of the key themes in this one as well. Environmental preservation, housing, planning coordination, including with the city of Annapolis, community engagement, economic vibrancy. Next slide, please. So getting into the natural environment chapter, there were a total of 19 strategies. There were six that were specific to our region, and key highlights include expanding the green infrastructure network and including within that connections to the city of Annapolis Greenway Network, support for living shorelines, strategies to promote increased tree cover and conservation of of open space, and as I just said, improved stormwater management, retrofit of older stormwater facilities, and incentives for quality for quantity, stormwater quantity management above code requirements. Next slide, please. Our Built Environment chapter is by far the longest chapter, and it had a total of 70 strategies with 18 that are specific to our region. Key recommendations include focusing the majority of growth into the parole town center, and that's consistent with the OS designation of the parole town center as a as a targeted growth area in Plan 2040. Various strategies to encourage and promote affordable housing, especially within parole, missing middle housing in other parts of the region, expanding access to transit and coordination of transit across jurisdictions, including with the city. Roadway improvements that are prioritized at key locations, expanding bicycle and pedestrian linkages, formalized coordination with the city of Annapolis in both current and long-range transportation and infrastructure planning, promotion of electric vehicle infrastructure. And this Built Environment chapter, that also has the policy area map and the planned land use map and the list of changes in the appendix, and I'll I'll talk about those a little bit later. A couple of things, though, that I do want to highlight in this Built Environment chapter, I'll start first with the Ridgely Avenue and Weems Creek community area. This is just north of the Best Gate Road area, and it crosses the US 50 corridor. But currently, there there are already some range of different uses along this Ridgely Avenue area. You have a lot of residential structures that have been reused for commercial or small business uses. There are two large office buildings in this area, and it's around, all of this surrounded by low-density residential uses, and it is a historic area. We did receive several requests to change the planned land use during Plan 2040 in this area, and at that time, the recommendation was only to change the planned land use to align with existing zoning that was on the ground and defer any recommendation to expand commercial land use in this area to to the region planning process with input from community stakeholders. And so we began this community outreach during the region plan process in the early part of 2023 with a community meeting that was attended by well over 70 people from this surrounding area. And what became clear from from that outreach and from subsequent input that we heard from folks in that area is that there's a lot of concern about the future of that community. There's some level of distrust due to past decisions, planning decisions in the area that have resulted in some of what we see today, this wide range of uses in this in this neighborhood, and concerns for potential intensification of development in that area. People want to protect the historic character of this area and protect the area's natural features. There are also concerns about traffic and bicycle and pedestrian safety in that area as well as stormwater impacts to Weems Creek and Cove of Cork. So we we did, in this region plan process, receive several zoning change applications for this area, and I'll I'll talk a little bit more about those, but ultimately, the region plan is recommending that there be no planned land use or zoning changes to this area and that we preserve the existing neighborhood preservation policy area and develop a more detailed sector plan for this area. Now, earlier drafts of our region plan, we had recommended applying a village center development policy area overlay along this Ridgely Avenue area, but we had heard from many in the community who were opposed to this village center policy area designation. They felt like they were afraid that it would open the door to significant new development and negatively impact the area's character, the waterways, the the tree canopy in the area. And so based on that input and on the recommendation from the Planning Advisory Board, we're now recommending that we, you know, conduct that sector plan process but not designate the area as with a village center overlay. We do see this sector plan process as an opportunity to engage more deeply with the community and to identify the characteristics of the area that are special and that that need to be preserved, identify any environmental or transportation concerns, and and then develop some very carefully tailored provisions that can be applied that are specific to that area to help guide any future development or redevelopment as well as investment in that area and make sure that it's managed in a way that supports and enhances enhances this area and maintains its historic character. And then a couple of other things I'll point out in the Built Environment chapter. Along the Best Gate Road area, Plan 2040 had recommended that just over 40 properties on the south side of Best Gate Road, it's outlined in black on the screen here, and it includes that Navy Federal Credit Union and and the Shell Station on Best Gate Road. Plan 2040 had recommended that those come into the parole town center with a town center policy area designation. Part of it also had transit-oriented policy area overlay. We did have several subsequent community meetings with residents in that area, and really, they they anticipate remaining in their homes over that 20-year planning horizon. And so based on that and the input that we got from them, we're recommending removing that area from the town center policy area and returning the planned land use designation to to match the current zoning in that area. And I'll I'll address this again in the planned land use and zoning discussion. I do have a a couple of pages in this chapter as well that focus on coordinating and enhancing coordination with the city of Annapolis. A key issue in this region is the cross-jurisdictional nature of of planning, particularly for transportation and land use planning. The city does have its own planning authority, and they are updating their comprehensive plan at the same time that we're updating this region plan. So we've been coordinating with them closely throughout this process. In fact, their comprehensive planner attended many of our Stakeholder Advisory Committee meetings and and was able to provide input and help us coordinate across that boundary. But we do have some strategies that recommend closer and more formalized coordination efforts between agencies in in these two jurisdictions, the county and the city, to ensure that we we have better alignment and and that we're up to date on the current planning issues in in each jurisdiction. So these, this this coordination will focus on both current and long-range planning and help improve service delivery and enhance efficiency within the region. The next two chapters, Healthy Communities and the Healthy Economy chapter, we had 11 healthy community strategies. Six of those were regional, prioritizing expanded public water access, expanded trail network, emergency planning coordination. And then in terms of healthy economy, most of these strategies, as was said before, are covered by Plan 2040. We do have four additional strategies with one being specific to the region, including minority-owned business support, public art support, and those sorts of things. Now getting into the comprehensive zoning piece of this, we also started with updating the holding capacity analysis specific to Region Seven, and this is summarized on the screen, but the the end result of that was that there is enough development and redevelopment potential with within the existing zoning categories within Region Seven to accommodate the region's projected growth over the planning horizon. And much of this potential capacity is within the parole town center with its redevelopment So we reviewed the draft zoning maps and the public input that we received with the Stakeholder Advisory Committee during the months of March and April, and then again in June, and again in September. And the Planning Advisory Board also reviewed these maps, and so the the map that is coming before you all now, it reflects refinement based on this and on public input at these various stages in the process. We received 28 comprehensive zoning applications from property owners during the first application window, and then there were, at later stages, a few more came in and some amendments to those initial, to some of the initial applications that we got. And these applications generally came from four geographic areas in the region, the Ridgely Avenue area, the parole town center, the southern part of Route Two below the parole town center, and then the outer Annapolis neck and Bay Ridge area. And so I'll just briefly go over, well, before I get into the going through each of the geographic regions. The end result is that there are not a lot of changes to zoning within this region. You'll see that there is a reduction in the C2 zoning that's largely due to some of the applicant requests, an increase in town center zoning, again, due to some of the applications that we received. Open space zoning was increased. A lot of that's due to placing all of Quiet Waters Park in open space zoning. And then you'll kind of see a flip-flop in R10 and R15 zoning that has to do with kind of right-sizing the zoning based on the the built condition on the ground, particularly in the Tidewater Colony and Windgate communities off of Best Gate Road. So marching around the the region briefly, I'll start in the Riva area. Not a whole lot of changes in this area at all. This was assigned the Neighborhood Preservation Policy Area in Plan 2040, and it's a lot of existing stable residential communities, natural areas. Primarily, changes in this area are consistency changes. We do have one planned unit development, Waterford, in the Riva area that did not receive any zoning changes. So that's that's the Riva area there. If I can go to the next slide. The westernmost part of the region, Heritage Harbor, and then the Riva Road area, this area is all within the Neighborhood Preservation Development Policy Area. Lot of this area is within planned unit development, so Heritage Harbor and Riva Trace, again, no changes to zoning within those areas. Otherwise, consistency changes largely in this area. Within the parole town center, that's outlined in black here, this was in the town center development policy area, as well as town center planned land use applied with Plan 2040. There weren't a lot of zoning changes within the parole town center due to the parole town center zoning overlay that you all reviewed and and looked at a few months ago with the passage of the parole town center master plan. We did receive four comprehensive zoning applications in this area, and we we addressed those. Also, if you'll look just to the to the north of the parole town center along Best Gate Road, this is where those 40 properties on the south side of Best Gate Road, we are recommending that they revert to the Neighborhood Preservation Policy Area and reverting the planned land use to something that is consistent with the existing zoning there, removing that from being within the parole town center. Next slide, the northern part of the Region Seven area, this is in the greater Annapolis community. All of this is within the Neighborhood Preservation Development Policy Area. That consistency change, largely the the Tidewater and Windgate communities on the south side of Best Gate Road, kind of in the orange area there, those face a lot of that flip-flopping between the R15 and R10 area. Then the Ridgely Avenue area, which is to the north of Best Gate Road, a lot of the current zoning there is small business surrounded by R2 zoning. We did receive nine comprehensive zoning applications in that area requesting C2 zoning up from either small business or R2 zoning. And as I mentioned before, our recommendation has been to retain the current zoning pending a sector plan process that's specific to that area that can dive in a little bit deeper and have a little bit more community engagement through that process. Then moving to Maryland Two area, south of the parole town center, this area is, most of it is within the Neighborhood Preservation Policy Area until you get to the existing commercial area at the South River, and that is part of the Critical Corridor Development Policy Area, and actually kind of ties in with the Critical Corridor Policy Area on the south side of the South River as well, but that's outside of our region. There were some consistency changes in this area, open space zoning, and we did get 10 comprehensive zoning applications in total in this area, with eight of those requests being within that sort of commercial area at the South River. This does add three properties to the Critical Corridor area, and that's just north of Sunset Drive, kind of the northern part of that that commercial area at the south at the South River there. So the eight requests at the South River, they either support existing businesses or redevelopment, including mixed-use redevelopment of aging or underdeveloped or underutilized properties in that area. If you'll go to the next slide, the outer Annapolis neck area, this is primarily within the Peninsula Development Policy Area, where there are some unique natural features and environmental concerns based on that. Most of the changes in this area were consistency changes aligning with the built condition. There were open space changes. We got several requests from community groups that are property owners to retain residential zoning or else change existing open space zoning on their properties to something that is is residential and matches the rest of the neighborhood there. The Quiet Waters Park has been recommended to be fully placed in open space zoning. You'll notice up in the northern part of the the screen here, the Chesapeake Harbor area, a revised split between the R10 and R15 zoning that reflects the existing built condition on the ground there. We did get six comprehensive zoning applications, all from property owner associations requesting to retain or change the zoning of their open space parcels to residential. And so that's that's it on Region Seven. At this point, I'll turn it over to Mark Burt, who will walk you through how to use the the web viewer.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, Patrick. Good morning. My name is Mark Burt. I'm Planning Administrator for the Research and GIS section. Like Christina said, we're responsible for the maps and these web maps that you'll be reviewing today. So this morning, I will be reviewing or giving you a demonstration of the Comprehensive Zoning Web Viewer. We do have two of them out right now for Region 7 and Region 2. They can be found at aacounty.org/region2 or at aacounty.org/region7. That will take you to the Region Hubs, and I will show you how to get to the web map from there. First, I would like to go through the labels that you will see on the map, what we're calling our change numbers. It's a little mishmash of abbreviations and numbers that all mean something, so we'll walk you through it here. If we start at the beginning of the acronym there, the CZ, that stands for Comprehensive Zoning. The next set of letters and numbers is an R and a 2, and this would be for Region 2. Our community code comes next, and that's a three-letter code for each of our communities within the county that were delineated in Plan 2040. In this example, we're using Laurel, and that is LRL. The last three-digit number at the end is our change number. And we do have a couple sets of change numbers that allow not only the planners but the public to quickly identify where the change came from and who was responsible for the change. So in the example, we're using change number 105, and that would have been a staff-recommended change. You can see in the table below, change numbers 0, basically 1 through 99 are owner applications; 100 through 199 are staff-recommended changes; 200 through 299 are staff-recommended companion changes. And these changes are if staff recommended change and some companion parcels around them to bring the zoning into alignment. 300-level changes are from the SAC. 400-level changes, 400 to 499, are owner applications that were received during the preliminary draft. The 500-level changes are owner applications received during the Planning Advisory Board process. And then we're reserving 600 through 699 for any council amendments. Then 1,000 and above are our consistency changes. So with that, now that we can understand what the numbers are on the map, I'm going to go out of the PowerPoint here and navigate to our Region Hub plan. So again, to get to our Region Hubs, and I'm using Region 2 in this example, that would be aacounty.org/region2. So once the hub site opens up, it has some great information on it about the final recommended drafts. And we will scroll down to where we see the relevant links, documents below, and in the bulleted list, we'll go to the second link here, final recommended draft of the Comprehensive Zoning Map. If we click on that link, it's going to open up the Region 2 Comprehensive Zoning Bill Number 7-24, proposed digital zoning layer for January 26, 2024. That's a mouthful, so we're going to refer to it as the Comprehensive Zoning Viewer. The viewer opens up with a welcome splash page, providing some information and an overview on what was contained in the map, some information on the process, and some information link to some tools that are within the map. So if we click on that, it can give you an idea of what it will look like. On all our web maps, we do include the GIS data disclaimer, just something we have to include. To move forward, we'll click and agree and click OK. You'll notice that the Details Page, or the Details pane, is open upon the web map loading. Within this pane, it provides some information on the process, on the recommended sites. It talks a little bit about Bill 2022, 23, and how we're correcting the minor errors in zoning. And then provides some additional details about the sites. And this additional information is in the form of tables. The Comprehensive Zoning Tables are linked. If you do click on the links, it will provide you with a download of the Comprehensive Zoning Table that you can look through. Also provided is a link to the Zoning Consistency Table. So if I click on that link, it will download the zoning consistency table and open up for you, for the user, so you can get more information about those. So to close the Details pane, we'll exit out there. It can be reopened by clicking on the information icon. Now, the second icon here, the map layers, looks like three sheets of paper stacked. If we click on those, it will open up the map layers pane. The map layers with the "i" not crossed out are the ones that are active within the map. Some layers may be active in the map, but you can't see them. They're grayed out. These are layers that you have to zoom in to see. So that would be parcels, address points, and some additional imagery. So if we use this plus or zoom-in tool down here at the bottom, and it's usually two or three clicks to get us close enough where the parcels will load in, and we can start to get some more detailed information. To zoom back out to see the full region, click the little icon that looks like a house, and it'll take you back to the default map view. Now, this is all great, but how do we find information within the map? In the upper right is a search bar that will allow you to search addresses. It will allow you to search the zoning change numbers, and it'll allow you to search parcel information like tax account numbers. So for this demo, we're going to start typing in a zoning change number. And so we start typing the CZ. And then we know we're in Region 2, R2. And you can see that it starts to auto-populate. It is intelligent search. It will start to provide you some examples. The one we're looking for is the one we were looking at earlier in Laurel, Laurel 105. So we can see it here in the dropdown list that appears, and we'll click on it. In the search results, it gives us the Laurel, the resultant Laurel that we're looking for. And we'll double-click on it to get it to zoom to that zoning change area. And you can see the zoning change is outlined in black, and you can see some other labels on the map. Those are some other zoning changes in the thousands, so those are consistency changes. Now, to get information in the map, some information that could be applied to the zoning applications that the council currently has open, the user can click on a parcel or anywhere in the map, and an informational pop-up will appear. In the bottom left, or in the bottom right corner of the pop-up, it'll display how many layers are providing information. So in this pop-up, we have five layers providing information. The top one is the community boundary. We know we're in Laurel. It gives a description of the proposed zoning. We're moving to R5. It'll give some general information about the change number and acreage of that change. And it'll also provide the tax account, tax map, block, parcel, and lot for the parcel selected. And the last one, it will identify the aerial imagery if you want to know what tile you're looking at. So there is some other functionality built into this web tool. We do have a legend that displays the layers that are active in the map. We added a print tool that allows the user to print a map from the web tool. This tool allows the user to add in their own title. It allows the user to pick the orientation and page size. And if they're looking to get into some more advanced options, you can go in and include a legend and a north arrow. You can even change the units of the scale, from miles to feet, however you want to change them. The next thing, to get the map, you would click the print button, and in the print results, wait for it to stop spinning here. And as soon as this stops spinning, we're able to click on the print icon there and have the map with the legend and any north arrow and scale in it, and also with the date that it was printed. This application does allow it to be shared out in three different ways. The link can be embedded into another website or page. It can be, the link can be emailed via email, and just the link can be copied and pasted into a new web browser. That concludes the demonstration of the zoning, the Comprehensive Zoning Web Viewer. I think we're ready to take any questions that council may have.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you. I was playing in the map while you were doing that. I have a question.
Sure.
Okay, so if I wanted to see just the consistency change areas, I crossed out the "i" in all other categories?
Mm-hmm.
And there's nothing left. There's no colors.
Oh, okay. So with that, if we can watch on the screen here?
Yeah.
We'll try to replicate what you're doing there. So we're going to leave on the all other region plans, just because it grays everything out in the background.
Yep.
We're going to turn off the, we'll turn off the address plans, we'll turn off the Region 2 zoning change areas, we'll leave the consistency areas on, can turn off the community boundaries, we'll turn everything off. We'll leave the proposed zoning on, so we can see what's going on under there. And we'll turn the imagery off. So when we zoom in, we don't have the imagery distorted underneath. So if we zoom in, two or three clicks on the plus button, and that will just show the consistency changes in a dotted outline. If we zoom in a little further, it will label them.
Okay, so the proposed zoning almost always has to be visible?
Yeah, it has to be active in the map.
Okay.
So to be seen.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question, going back to really, it's, there was a lot of discussion about, in the beginning, maybe with Region 2, maybe with Ms. Pampa, about this mixed use and our issue with reforming mixed use, which is a part of Plan 2040. But we haven't created those new categories for mixed use. So as we get into the Comprehensive Zoning and zoning changes, how do you foresee parcels in the current regions being able to access or change into a new sort of mixed use category if they don't currently exist?
Right, so the idea is the SAC, the Stakehold Advisory Committee, identified those areas where the vision is in the future if they were to go to mixed use. So those are identified on the planned land use map, right? Your question is, what happens then if the county does reform the mixed-use zoning district categories? That would then, the council could look towards then the planned land use map and say, within these areas, based on then the descriptions within the region plan, these are, this is the general character of that mixed-use zoning district that could be applied based on that planned land use map designation. Does that help a little bit?
No.
Okay.
So I guess, I mean, this is our opportunity, over the next basically three years, we're going to go through comp zoning in the entire county, region by region. But in order to, if we're also simultaneously at some point going to reform via legislation all of mixed use, we have like four or five different mixed-use categories, when would we have the opportunity to apply those to parcels? Do we have to wait another 10 years? Or would we apply those in an overlay situation or the sector planning like Ridgely Avenue?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. So we don't know the timing for when the mixed-use zoning districts may be overhauled. And so one of the things we heard loud and clear from the communities, especially the stakeholders, was, you know, a lot of our mixed-use zones allow for very large development projects that are not in scale with the neighborhood. They like mixed use, they don't necessarily want 12 stories adjacent. So we found ourselves in a little bit of a quandary. There are two ways that property can be rezoned. Through the comprehensive process, which is initiated through the county executive and sent to legislation with the county council. And the other way is through piecemeal rezoning through the administrative hearing officer. I believe that if we, let's say, had mixed-use reform in the next two years, and now we have a number of years until comp zoning is going to come up for Region 2, if a property owner wanted to move forward, they could go to the administrative hearing officer and ask for the rezoning. Now, Ms. Fiedler has an interesting example, because she has a bill in right now for the maritime districts to create MA 1B. And I think that she did that timing-wise, because she wanted that available for potential properties through this comprehensive process. So in that case, it's potentially going to be out ahead, whereas for mixed use, we don't have zoning categories right now. But I think with the way we're going to line everything up in the region plans, that if a property owner did go to the administrative hearing officer later for piecemeal, they would certainly be in a position to look favorably upon a rezoning, because it's already set up in the plans.
So my next question, if no one else has any questions, is also general and forward-thinking for all of our regions. When we look at the holding capacities and our need for housing, what is the, so in Region 2, there's a deficit, and in Region 7, there seems to be capacity. So was there any thought to then how we rezone parcels to address the deficit in Region 2? Based on rezonings? Because there aren't a lot of, I mean, there was what, what did you say, 11 parcels being rezoned? Or?
Those were just the owner applications. So to address the housing deficit, we are looking towards making a dent in that, say, through the Annapolis Junction area, where there is that recommendation to upzone that area to a mixed-use transit. There are some other areas where there are slight upzonings. But again, hearing from the community that there's some adverse impacts as a result of development, we were a little sensitive to that. Do you want to sort of note that Odenton Town Center is adjacent to Region 2? And within that, there are higher, or there are greater opportunities for higher density to accommodate. So while we may not necessarily need to address that deficit specifically in the Region 2 boundary, just adjacent, and Fort Meade may be one of those drivers for the need for additional housing, having the Odenton Town Center right adjacent to Fort Meade could help address that deficit.
I know this has been a long presentation, but this is an opportunity outside of, you know, council meetings. So if any, Ms. Rodgian?
Thank you. This is actually live from a constituent who had a question. What is the relationship between this process and planning for traffic?
Well, we do have a long-range, long-range transportation is dealt with through the Office of Transportation, and they are working, I mean, this is a piece of the planning puzzle in Anarundel County that we touch on, but we are not wholly puzzle in Anarundel County that we touch on, but we are not wholly responsible for. And then there is the corresponding adequate public facilities process for new projects that are coming in.
I just want to thank you all for a very, very thorough presentation. It's a lot of information. The interested people, members of the public, I would recommend you go back and watch it a couple of times to get everything, because there's a lot there, but the tools that are available online are really invaluable for the public to really see what's going on. And I know all of our offices will be fielding lots of, you know, questions and recommendations and things moving forward, but I, I want to commend OPZ in the areas for really trying to make this as transparent a process as possible and bringing in all the community at every stage as they could. But we also know some people didn't, weren't engaged or didn't know about it at earlier stages, so there's still plenty of opportunities to hear out there, and I know that I look forward to hearing from people. And again, I want to thank you all for all your work.
Ms. Fiedler?
I just want to say, this map, I, this map is fun. I know that there was a lot of feedback on the map during Plan 2040. This is much improved. It's fun. That's all.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if, I don't know if the general public knows what nerds county council people are about land use, but I'm sure my legislative assistant is back in the office already exploring all kinds of things and going to give me all kinds of ideas. But I am, I am interested in reforming mixed use, and I think it's something we should focus on before we get to the next set of region plans, as well as any other cool zoning designations that we think will be impactful to tackle redevelopment, revitalization of certain areas, and our housing shortage. So I know I have probably six bills in the works that we'll be collaborating on, but I'm going to get through a couple before we start, before I start pushing for mixed use, but hopefully we can work on that. Do we have any other questions for this team? It's amazing, amazing, amazing work. I know the council is aware of what our job is over the next few months to tackle not, not only these two, but then a staggered start to Region 4. So I appreciate all of y'all's hard work, and we look forward to a long, productive conversation about these two regions. Anybody else?
Christina Pampa with OPZ. I wondered if you might want to give the public any more information about the application process for zoning, since it's, it's on your side of the fence now.
Sure. We have an application process that is up and live on the county council website. I don't, I can't repeat the web address, but it, if you go to aacounty.org and look at the county council, you'll find it, and we're here to answer any questions about that process as well. It should be very similar to the original application process. Ms. Corby, did you want to add anything about that that I've missed?
I don't think you missed anything. I was just going to say that it is at aacounty.org/county-council, and there is sort of a banner on the homepage where you can click on that. You can also look over to the left, there's a menu, and the last item is comprehensive zoning review. So by clicking on either one of those, it will take you to a landing page where there's some background, and then those two applications for region area, region planning area number two and number seven. And also with the help of the law office and OPZ folks, we did add important dates to that webpage to help keep people on track.
Thank you. Yeah, we did, we did engage in a, in a collaborative meeting regarding that application process. It is new for all of us. I want to thank Ms. Corby and everybody that helped support getting that up and running as soon as those bills were live. So we do have a process, and I don't believe, so for March, our March 4 meeting, we will have our first public hearing on both of these two plans, but I don't think at that time, the timing is set for addressing zoning changes. Is that correct? Because of the process? County council applications for zoning changes, amendments?
Oh, yes. We had, the, while the bills are scheduled for a public hearing on March 4, which is a potential day for amendments, I think, is that what we?
Yes.
We had discussed that, you know, the public hearing would be held, because you want to hear from people as soon as possible, but that if you have not received applications, that that probably indicates you need to wait for any further action until the next meeting to allow people a fair chance to submit those applications.
Thank you. That is what I meant to say. Well, we are at the end of this. If there's no other business to be brought before the county council at this time, we will adjourn the work session for today, and we will come back into these chambers on Tuesday, February 7, at 7:00 PM. February 20th, oh my gosh, this was a long meeting.
Not at 7, but it's already done.
That's already passed. February 20th, it is a Tuesday because of the holiday on the Monday, so, thank you.